Welcome to the Millbrae City Council meeting. We're going to do roll call. Ms. Schneider?
Present.
Mr. Hollibur?
Present.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Aliva?
Here.
Mayor Pappen, here. Thank you, everyone. Could you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have a couple ceremonial presentations, and the first one, we have the honor of having with us Mark Church, our assessor and county clerk, recorder. How long is the name, Mark? Former mayor, former supervisor, all that. Welcome, Mr. Church.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor and Mayor. Council and staff, thank you for having me, and thank you for the opportunity to present this informational report on the California Voters' Choice Act.
You've got to talk into the mic.
What is the California Voters' Choice Act? This is landmark legislation which will fundamentally transform how elections are conducted in the state of California. Now, it will ultimately be changing from a traditional polling place model to an all-mailed vote center model with ballot drop-off locations. And this is part of a sweeping collection of election reforms designed to increase voter The bill was effective January 1, 2018, and authorizes 14 selected counties to participate in this new election model. San Mateo County is at the forefront of this process, having successfully implemented our AB 2028 all-mailed ballot pilot program in 2015. And this legislation, in many ways, is patterned after that experience and contains many of the recommendations and methodologies of our report of that election to the Secretary of State and the state legislature. Fourteen counties are authorized to participate, but only five counties will actually implement this new model in the upcoming June election. The remaining counties are authorized to participate in 2020 and beyond. This act applies to any election, including presidential and gubernatorial elections. Previously, our AB 2028 pilot program applied only to local elections. And another important distinction is that the decision to participate is discretionary at the county level. And our Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution last year to move forward with this new election The Voters' Choice Act provides choices on how to vote. Voters can choose to vote by mail, vote in person at a vote center, or drop off their voted ballot at a ballot drop-off location. And ballots will be mailed to every registered voter in the county 29 days before the election. Each ballot will have a postage-paid return envelope. Ballots will be provided in Spanish, Chinese, and English, as required by the Federal Voting Rights Act. And ballots that are postmarked by Election Day and received no later than three days after the election will be accepted. Unlike a traditional polling place, voters can vote in person at any vote center in the county, starting 29 days before the election, including the two weekends before the election. Each city or town will have at least one vote center. And voters can receive a replacement ballot or damaged, damaged or lost ballot at any vote center. And voters can also drop off a voted ballot at any vote center. Vote centers also provide access to our voter registration database in real time, which allows for immediate verification of voter status. This allows for conditional voter registration at the vote centers up through Election Day. Each vote center will have multilingual assistance and provide three accessible voting machines for persons with disabilities. We will continue to open our North, Central, and South County vote centers 29 days before Election Day. The Voters' Choice Act requires at least one vote center for every 50,000 registered voters 10 days before Election Day. We will actually have nine vote centers, one more than is required 10 days before Election Day. Three days before Election Day, we will have 39 vote centers, based on one vote center for every 10,000 registered voters. For the June 2018 election, we will be deploying our e-slate voting system, which will include the use of 400 e-slates and 200 laptops using VPN and Wi-Fi connections. Our voting machines are nearing the end of their useful life and are extremely costly to deploy. And we are now evaluating a new voting system, and we'll be testing it in small elections in 2019, and deploying it in the 2020 presidential election. The new vote center technology infrastructure will use paper ballots with one ballot scanner, three to four poll books, and one ballot-on-demand printer for each vote center. The new voting system and technology will be far less expensive than using our existing legacy system, and should reduce our costs significantly. In addition to the vote centers, the statute also requires ballot drop-off locations starting 28 days before the election. At least one location is required for every 15,000 registered voters. We will have 28 locations, which is two more than is required by statute. And in order to protect voted ballots, ballot drop boxes will be constructed with military-grade materials with image capture technology. This is a bird's-eye view of the vote centers and ballot drop-off locations scheduled to be placed throughout the county. In selecting these sites, consideration was given to the criteria set forth in the statute, including proximity to public transportation, population centers, language minority communities, and low-income communities. The law requires a comprehensive election administration plan for elections conducted under the act. Our draft plan was prepared in consultation with our Voting Accessibility Advisory Committee, comprised of voters with disabilities, and our Language Accessibility Advisory Committee, comprised of representatives of language minority communities. The election administration plan also includes a voter education and outreach plan, which was recently approved with minor modifications by the Secretary of State. Our voter education and outreach plan will include public meetings and a media campaign. We will target voters who don't usually vote by mail with multiple communications. Our media campaign will be similar to the one we did in 2015 under AB 2028, and will include radio, television, digital, print, social media, with multilingual communications. Voters who vote by mail will receive a new digital "I Voted" sticker, which they can use on their social media postings and on their email accounts. We are targeting the 2018 gubernatorial and general elections for implementation of this new law. Conditional voter registration will be available at all vote centers. Voters who miss the 15-day registration deadline will be allowed to conditionally register to vote and be provided a provisional ballot. Provisional ballots will be counted when the voter's eligibility is confirmed. And, Madam Mayor, that concludes my report. I would like to introduce my staff, if I may. First, my assistant, Jimmy Rosari, is here, together with Kenny Lynn, our election specialists. And with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Schneider?
Thank you so much for coming. This is always exciting. And for the audience, San Mateo County has long had the reputation of being one of the best registrar voters in the country, so congratulations. Two questions. From Millbrae, our three-day voting center is going to be at?
Three-day vote center is going to be at City Hall, I believe. City Hall, and the ballot drop-off location is going to be at the community center.
So that means that for the three days before, so the Tuesday, the Monday, and the Sunday, or the Saturday?
It is three days before, so including Election Day, it will be four days.
Okay, so Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
So Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday.
Great. And then there'll be a 10-day voting center in San Bruno, correct? That's going to be the closest one to us? I've got the map in front of me, and I remember because you've spoken at a couple of other places that I've attended. So for the people of Millbrae, 10 days prior to the election, you also have the ability to vote in person. And I don't remember the location in San Bruno, but it will be advertised, and you'll be able to find it. So they're really trying to work hard to make sure it's easy to vote.
All those locations are set forth on our website. SMCacre.org.
San Bruno City Hall. It's on your list, if I had read.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Election Day is coming up in June. What's the date?
June 5.
June 5.
Oh, June 5. Yes.
And the ballots will be mailed early May. And there are some very important things on this coming June election, so we encourage everyone to please participate in the process. Particularly, there's a school initiative, parcel tax, is that what we're talking about? So please pay attention and vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Church. We appreciate your being here.
Thank you for your interest. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on. We have a very heavy agenda here. We've got one more proclamation. April 28, 2018, Arbor and Earth Day. And we have two of our wonderful staff here, Environmental Programs Manager Shelley Ryder and Parks Superintendent Ken Corsetti. If you have not participated in our Arbor Day or Earth Day, Millbrae just does a spectacular job. Thank you primarily to both of you and your staff. You can be responsible for planting a tree, because Ken's staff actually dig the hole for you. It's very rewarding, then, just to plop it in there. But 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees, which became an annual event called Arbor Day and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And this is the 25th that Millbrae has celebrated. Let's see. This is 25th year that Millbrae has been designated, I'm sorry, as a Tree City. And the city has planted over 3,000 trees, which has helped to reduce soil erosion by wind and water, cut heating, cooling costs, moderate temperature, cleaning our air, produced oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And the city has supported Earth Day since its inception, April 22, 1970, when it was created by the United States Senator Gaylord Nelson, to increase awareness about our planet's fragile ecosystem and educate people on the responsible environmental stewardship. The city is committed to preserving our environment and contributing to a sustainable community by supporting programs for water conservation, climate protection, recycling, and water pollution prevention. And the city celebrates and supports Arbor and Earth Day by implementing a variety of activities to encourage our community's awareness and participation in preserving our natural environment. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2018, as Arbor and Earth Day. And we encourage the community and businesses to use this day to celebrate the earth and to commit to creating a cleaner, healthier environment for better quality of life for current and future generations. We invite our community to join the city in planting trees and picking up litter on this day at Rotary Park at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. We hope everyone can join us for the annual Arbor and Earth Day, April 28, 10:00 a.m. We'll start at Rotary Park, where we'll plant a couple of trees, and we'll plant more trees on the spur trail and pick up litter, so we hope you can join us. And thanks to Ken and John and the Parks crew, we'll plant those trees and do some other activities. Also, for the 48th Earth Day, we'll do a meet-and-greet downtown in Millbrae Square on April 16, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and then teaming up again with the children's librarian to do an environmental movie, and that will be at 3:30 on the 20th. So, thank you.
This year, last year, I guess it was, we removed quite a few eucalyptus trees along the Millbrae spur trail. And so this year, it was my goal to replant out there. And so this year, we're probably going to be planting about 50 trees, not 50 trees, entrubs total, and we're going to fill back in that whole line over there. So I'm excited about that, and I know the neighbors out there are looking forward to it.
The trees on El Camino Real. Any help, please?
They're struggling.
We're on.
We're trying.
Our next proclamation. Councilmember Hollibur suggested, and we agree. The city, this is a celebration of diversity march. This was founded in 2004. Recognize and honor the different cultures, backgrounds, and life experiences of people throughout the world. And the United States of America was founded on the principles of freedom and equality. We are a country of immigrants. We are all welcome. We're all, all are welcome. And while no other nation holds such diverse society, equality and justice for all, regardless of ethnic heritage, skin color, sexual orientation, or religion, take a great amount of work and sacrifice. America's history has taught us that we must always recognize and celebrate America's history has taught us that we must always recognize and celebrate the diversity of all people who have made our country great and never forget who we are and where we come from. And the city of Milbury recognizes, appreciates, and celebrates the heritage and life experiences of all. Now, therefore, to this end, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Celebrate Diversity Month. We hereby encourage our community and businesses to use this month to welcome, learn, and understand people from all over the world to celebrate diversity month. So please, I thank Councilmember Holliver for bringing this up. It is so important in this day and age that we really remember and everybody coming together because we can learn from one another, and it's just a beautiful thing. We are very proud of our diverse communities in Milbury and look forward to this being the beginning of further proclamations from here on in. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruben.
And we have one speaker slip for that. Wynne?
Please. Hi, my name is Wynne Gershich, and I'm here to talk about the proclamation for Arbor Day and Earth Day. If you look up geoengineeringwatch.org, Dane Wiggington is on there. He has a radio station on the weekends, and he's telling everybody about the geoengineering of the weather. So when they spray aluminum oxide, strontium, and barium, and they're spraying these things to cover up what they're doing in the air and creating our weather using the HART machine and these 5G cell towers, that they're actually killing our trees. He has a game preserve up in Lake Shasta, and they have to use genetically modified organisms, they have to use that kind of forestry, to reseed all of the trees that are dying because of what our government is doing to our land. And if we're good stewards of the land, the best thing that we can do is stop this spraying. And we need people to know this. And if you, anything thinks about this climate action plan of what the cities are doing, this is all about making money and turning things to change the power that we're using so that we don't use gas, we're going to use electricity, and it's going to go to all these other things. But the thing about changing the weather and creating a drought, because we have the capability of doing it, they have been geoengineering the weather way back, over 60 years ago. And every document is on that site. But what we're doing to the plants and everything, we are killing this planet. And what Dane Wiggington says, we're lucky if we've got another seven years to live. And this is something that people need to be aware of, because once you've killed off the plants, and you've killed off the bees that pollinate them, you poison the water, what have we got left? Nothing. And if that's their point about depopulation, people really need to check this out. Geoengineeringwatch.org, listen to Dane Wiggington. His radio shows are on YouTube. You can listen to this all on YouTube. But the biggest thing about the Arbor Day, trees and things are important, because when we breathe out our carbon dioxide, they make oxygen, right? And we can't be killing these trees off. And when you have to genetically modify and make these fake organisms to replace the things to grow in aluminum oxide soil, what have we done? So Arbor Day is really important, and so is Earth Day. And I hope that you find out these facts, and you don't have to take my word for it. This man has actually sued the Climate Change Accord, and he's got lawyers and things working for him. And if you look up Geoengineering Watch, you're going to know what I'm talking about. But the fact is Arbor Day is really important, and we need trees and plants. And this is extremely important because we're killing everything off. So we need to get this spraying stopped. And check out Dane Wiggington, YouTube, geoengineeringwatch.org.
Thank you. And we have now our agenda overview.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, we will begin with the...
Deanna, I want to introduce yourself.
Deanna Hillbrans, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you.
We'll have the report of bills and claims, an informational item, and report out from City Attorney from special closed session of March 27, 2018. Council will consider approval of minutes from the regular meeting of January 9, 2018, an action item. There are no oral reports from committees or commissions. Public communications, followed by the consent calendar. The following items are on the consent calendar. Resolution awarding a service contract to Ames PVIC California LLC DBA Ames Companies in the amount of $250,276 for the 2018 sanitary sewer mains cleaning and inspection project and authorizing the city manager to sign the contract and all contract change orders up to the project contingency of $37,000. This is an action item. Second, next item, authorized by motion, a contribution of $5,000 to San Mateo County Sheriff's Office for the San Mateo County Gun Buyback Program. This is an action item. Action item to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the second addendum to the professional services agreement with Mintier-Harnish to increase the contract cost by $91,364 for an updated parking study for a total not to exceed contract cost of $677,801 and authorize an increase of $100,000 in the special and capital projects budget in the general fund for fiscal year 2017-2018. This is an action item. Adopt resolution authorizing payments of up to $100,000 per year through June 30, 2020 for the existing instructor contract with Marion Kong to provide instruction for the daily academic support system after-school course. Adopt resolution amending the 2017-2018 capital budget for the financial system implementation project and authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to agreement with Tyler Technologies for Enterprise Resource Planning Software, ERP software, to add software-as-a-service services for a total all-inclusive not-to-exceed contract cost of $940,000 through June 30, 2023. Amendments of the ERP software agreement, authorize amendments to the ERP software agreement for additional services or enhancements up to $40,000 per year through June 30, 2023. An addendum to the agreement with GSD Consulting for project management and technical services for the financial system implementation in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. And an agreement with InfoSend for bill printing and mailing services in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for a three-year period. Next item, approve the donation of surplus fire equipment, a 1996 High-Tech Pumper. And next item, number 11, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates in an amount not to exceed $400,000 for the preparation of a comprehensive access plan for the Milbury Intermodal Station and execute reimbursement agreements with California High-Speed Rail Authority, Bay Area Rapid Transit District, Caltrain, and San Francisco Airport, who will each reimburse a share of cost totaling $350,000 in reimbursements. There are no public hearings. Existing business includes Gateway at Milbury Station Project, continuing the consideration of the applications, relevant documents, and testimony, and taking actions, including adopting a resolution considering the Gateway at Milbury Station Project, making findings concerning significant impacts of the project, adopting a statement overriding considerations, adopting mitigation monitoring and reporting program based on a final environmental impact report certified by the city council on January 12, 2016, all in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act. Adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement for the Gateway at Milbury Station Project. Adopt a resolution approving the site development plan for the Gateway at Milbury Station Project. Adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for commercial lodging in Building 6B of the Gateway at Milbury Station Project. And adopt the resolution approving a vesting tentative map for the Gateway at Milbury Station Project. Item number 13 is an oral report from the mayor regarding the call for nominations for vice mayor. And under new business, item 14, staff is recommending to pull this item and move to a future meeting. This was to accept the comprehensive annual financial report for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. Due to error, this item, the CAFRA, was not posted on the website with the agenda. It is on the website but not posted with the agenda, so staff is recommending that this is renoticed and brought back. The evening will conclude with council comments. And just a couple of additional announcements. You did hear about Arbor and Earth Day coming up. There is a new Tahitian dance class for children in kindergarten through third grade. Please see the Milbury Recreation website for information about that. Also, to sign up for adult summer league baseball and volleyball. And on April 23 through 26, the Milbury Lions will host youth and government. If you are interested, you may seek an application on the Milbury Lions Club website. And a final item, please begin to look in your mail. There will be a meeting, a community meeting for the next phase of the community center rebuild project, and that will happen on May 1, and you'll receive information coming out to you in the mail. I think one last item is the next meeting will be returned to the council chambers at Milbury City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
Can I just clarify the youth and government?
Yeah, sure.
If I could just clarify, the youth and government, according to the application on the Lion website, tomorrow is the deadline, and it says that you need to bring your application into City Hall. But I think if we had a generic city clerk email, could the children who might apply be able to send it into what email address?
You can send it to the Lions Club. It's milburylions@gmail.com.
Excellent. So milburylions@gmail.club...
Dot com.
Dot com. Thank you.
Okay. And I would like to emphasize, too, the May 1 meeting allows you to give your input on the next steps for the rebuild of the community center. So we encourage everyone to come, and you can also make comments, again, through the website and see what the status is of this project as we proceed to rebuild and recover from the tragic fire. We're coming on in about two years now, so please participate. Your thoughts are very welcome. I think we agree that we'll pull item 14. The CAFRA. And before we get to public comments, we do have a speaker for item 6.
Madam Mayor, I need to give the report on the closed session.
Oh, right ahead.
And I'm here to report that there were no reportable actions taken.
That was extremely important. What's that going to cost us on the legal bill? Thank you. Okay. Approval of the minutes from January 9. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Oliva, seconded by Councilmember Lee. Your votes, Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. No oral reports from committees or chairs.
Oh, so you have to wait for the clerk to announce the results.
Oh, sorry.
Chill. Sorry.
He wants you to announce what we just did out loud. I'm not sure why. The minutes have been approved unanimously. Robert rules, okay. Before we get to public communications, on the consent calendar, we do have a speaker for item 6. Item 8, we should probably mention something because we have these lovely little mugs here.
I have one little.
Public communication.
Okay. Seven... Excuse me, what?
I'd like to pull number nine just for conversation.
Pulling number nine. I think we need a comment on 7 and 11.
I have a friendly amendment on 5, 7, and 11.
Okay, well, we don't have much of a consent calendar then. All right, let's move to public comment. First speaker, Mr. Lu Sandrini.
Madam Mayor and Council, if I started to discuss an item on the agenda, not... Mayor Papin would have stopped me. She expects me to comply with the policy on public communication. She would be correct to do this because I would break one of her expectations. An expectation is a strong belief something will happen in the future. They are very important. Broken expectations lead to serious questions relative to trust, morality, ethics, integrity, and worthiness. Much of our lives depend on expectations we have of ourselves and others. We do things like driving, interacting with others in manners to be expecting safe and civil that depend on others acting in ways that we reasonably expect. We vote for public officials who will have considerable influence on virtually all aspects of our lives based on our understanding of their values, standards, morality, character, and trustworthiness. We expect them to live up to these traits. This means we expect them to respect and honor the laws, rules, and policies of their politic body. If they do not, then individually, they represent themselves as not trustworthy and not moral. As a political body, they are not worthy of being entrusted with the public trust. So I ask the council, as individuals and a city council, to be mindful of these two roles. Are you a moral and trustworthy person with values and ethics that will respect the expectations of those people who voted for you, Madam Mayor, if you pay attention? Are you a member of a political body that respects the public trust, Madam Mayor? How are you going to act as a person and council tonight as you consider the agenda items, especially the one where you vote, where your voters, your voters, the electorate, expect Ann Schneider to be the vice mayor this year? I hope you heard that, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your attention almost.
Mr. Sandrini, you're commenting on public items on the agenda, so I guess we'll disregard your other speaker slip. Wynne Gershich.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I did not...
You can sit down now, Mr. Sandrini. Your time is up.
I did not comment on that. This was...
Mr. Sandrini.
Madam Mayor, I respectfully ask you to...
Sheriff's Department?
I respectfully ask you to...
Mr. Sandrini.
I'm here tonight to talk about the shooters in the schools and why all these kids were protesting about gun, you know, laws and things like that. And many of our children would like to get rid of the guns in this country. But what's happening right now is some of these things are caused by these psych drugs. And this is kind of interesting because this is on YouTube. It says, "The CIA's Secret Experiments." This is a medical documentary. And they talk about how they brought 150 Nazi scientists to our country to make a drug for our government, this is after World War II, to turn people into killers. And the drug of choice in MKUltra was LSD. But now, the stuff that's the drug of choice is our psych drugs. If you look this up, it says, this is on YouTube, and this is a documentary, it says, "The Drugging, The Drugging of Our Children." And this is by Gary Null. And they're going to talk about all the drugs that have fluoride in it. That's one of them that kind of is not a good thing. And how these drugs, what they do to our children. And how the public schools now, what they're doing is they're having people come in, and if your kid's hyperactive attention deficit, they bring in these people and they question these kids, and then they call their parents and they try to get these kids on drugs because it's a big pharmaceutical cash cow to have your kid being on these psych drugs or these attention deficit drugs. And then they get hooked on it, but this stuff messes up their brain. And I want you to see these scientists and these doctors talking about the side effects of all of these drugs and the things that they do to these children. Because what's really scary is that when you see that this is what caused these kids to be the shooters in the schools. This is another one. It says depression is not a chemical, it's not a chemical imbalance. And this is a heck of a documentary because it talks about what they're doing and how they're trying to get more and more of our children on psych drugs. So we're going to have more and more kids go crazy and shoot up their schools. This is scary, and this is why this is so important. But most of all, this one, The Cooking of Humanity with Dr. Barry Trower, he talks about using microwave radiation, and they can actually shoot somebody with a laser beam, maybe from those 5G cell towers they're putting around our schools, and actually can turn somebody into a killer, he said, within three days. And they've known this since the 60s. So when you look at these things and you see what's happening, it's very frightening. And the bad part is, we recycle the toilet water. So all these kids that are going to the bathroom, and everybody that's on antidepressants when they're old, and we recycle the water, and you can't get those medicines out. Wynne Parker always said, and chloramine causes collateral health damage, you're not only drinking somebody else's medicine, you're drinking their disease. So you are drinking their medicine. And the more we get more people on these psych drugs, and it goes into our water and we can't get out, you're going to see a lot more crazy people. But they also talk about the lead leaching from the pipes, too, and how lead... But they also talk about the lead leaching from the pipes too, and how lead leaching causes people to be violent.
Thank you, Win.
Is that it? Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Okay. All right, moving on to the consent calendar.
Friendly amendment.
Okay, why don't we, is that with, anybody have which item?
Five, seven, and 11.
Okay, well, why don't we start with the friendly amendments to five, seven, and 11?
It's authorizing the acting city manager.
Okay, could we change that to the acting city manager?
Thank you.
Okay. We do have a speaker on item six, so why don't, can we go from there?
Do you want to vote? Here?
Yeah, well, I got a lot of mumbling up here.
Do you want to vote five, seven, and 11 first?
Um, we had a comment, I had a comment on seven.
Oh, I thought you said comment on six.
My mic wasn't on, Gina.
Your mic wasn't on.
Sorry.
So, I repeated it to acting city manager, okay? On those items, we're good? Okay, I lost my little speaker slip here. Item six is the gun buyback, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
What, can we get this mic going here, Dave?
I can, I can talk loud, if it's easier. Good evening, Millbury council members. My name is Danielle Lacampña, and I'm here as a representative of citizens for San Mateo County Gun Buyback. I'm here also with Becky Dodson from our group. And in February, our group approached San Mateo County Sheriff Bolanos to suggest that the county put on another large-scale gun buyback like they did in 2013. And we're happy to let you know that we are now collaborating with Sheriff Bolanos to put on a buyback this year. And the sheriff's office has agreed to plan and manage and conduct and publicize the event, and our group has agreed and has the honor of collecting and raising funds for this event. So, we're happy to be here tonight and appreciate you having us. The gun buyback is a very important avenue for people to dispose of unwanted weapons, and it removes weapons from homes that could be utilized for suicide, which accounts for about two-thirds of gun-related deaths and other issues such as domestic violence and homicide. So, this gun buyback would be in exchange for cash funds for the voluntary surrender of firearms, like the last one. And it would engage the community towards a common goal of reducing gun violence. And in 2013, and we're going to model it very similar to 2013, $100 was given for handgun, shotguns, and rifles, and 200 for assault-type weapons. So, we'll be using a very similar model. It'll be in a neutral location. And just wanted respectfully ask that you support this event. We have had amazing support from San Mateo County. We have matching funds of $50,000 from San Carlos. And we have Portola and Woodside giving $10,000 to this event, and Redwood City, San Mateo, and Belmont giving 5,000. And we expect there's a few more cities that we are going to speak like we are here, who we're also expecting to be also donating 5,000. So, we'd appreciate this very much, and thank you so much, and we're here for questions if you have any.
We do, and we hope to enjoy, join that $5,000 contribution there. Do you also take ammunition if somebody needed to drop off ammunition?
I believe, I'm not positive about that. I believe there's some safety risks to doing that at the same event. So, I'm not positive about that part, to be honest. I know that in the past, people did bring ammunition, but I believe in looking at old buybacks, it's usually not what they want to have at the same site.
I'm sure the sheriff's department could help us out.
Yes, definitely.
Anybody has any issues with that? We thank you so much. Any other questions?
Where's the location?
Where's the location?
Well, we, we're quite certain it will be in a lot in Redwood City, and it will likely be May 5th. It's been, it's been a little bit of to-do gathering, getting the safe location. They've had to look really closely at that.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Is there any chance of a location in North County?
There, actually, Daly City also holds a gun buyback, and I believe they are doing one the same day. It'll be a little bit different of a scale, but they are as well doing one. And they do do them periodically in Daly City, but I don't know if their catchment area, I think they have a, an area that they service that may not include Millbury.
Okay, Mr. Holliver?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for your efforts in organizing this program. You know, definitely helps to reduce the number of guns in our community, the amount of gun violence and suicides, the leading cause of gun death in this country. And, you know, and also just the, all the enthusiasm from high school students, especially here at Mills High School. There were hundreds of students that walked out on the walkout day against gun violence after the Parkland shootings. I remember when I was at Mills, there was a walkout over the Iraq War, and they made an announcement saying that anyone who walked out would be suspended, and only about three people ended up walking out. But glad to see the activism coming from our young people here in Millbury. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, can you repeat the date one more time?
May 5th, we believe, is, final confirmation, I think, is coming, May 5th in Redwood City.
And if people wanted further information, is there a website or something?
Actually, we have partnered with gunbygun.org, gunxgun.org. If you want to look at that, there's a way even private citizens could make donations, and it's a 501(c)(3) that we partner with for, for that, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got item five and six. A question on seven, eight, and 11.
Nine.
Nine, okay.
Are we pulling nine?
Yeah, that's what you want.
Okay.
All right, so right now, item five and six, what about 10? Is everybody all right with 10? Okay, we have three items. We move approval. So, moved by Councilmember Holliver, seconded by Councilmember Oliva. Ms. Schneider, your vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Pappin?
Aye.
I guess you have to announce. Could I get clarification on which items we just voted on again, please? Five, six, and 10. Consent calendar items five, six, and 10 passed unanimously. Okay, I probably should have thrown item eight in there, but we did want to mention here, item eight is authorizing a payment of up to $100,000 a year through June 30th, 2020, for the existing instruction contract with Marion Kong to provide instructions for the daily academic support system after-school course. And we have our Boys and Girls Club provided these mugs and little treats today in appreciation, and also the handwritten notes from the students that do partake in that program, which is actually a wonderful program, and we are happy to assist. So, thank you to everyone, and thank you to the members of the Boys and Girls Club who provided these little treats.
And maybe a report from Marion Kong would be fun.
Is she here?
No, maybe a future.
Oh, in the future, absolutely. Okay, I move item eight approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Pappin?
Aye.
Item eight. Item eight on the consent calendar passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to item seven, which is just, if we could get a brief update, this is a parking study, which we all think is extremely important and long overdue. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Tanya Ward, Community Development Director. Thank you for bringing this item up because it's something we've all been looking forward to. As we all recall, there were a series of workshops that took place.
Again, we're having trouble with this microphone.
It's fine, they got it on.
They're getting it on the TV. It's okay, Anne, we, they've got it on the TV.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening. So, this item stems back from last spring when there were a series of workshops that took place by the General Plan Consultant Team, Mentor Harnish. Those workshops took place in coordination with Planning Commission and the city council. And at that time, there were some alternatives that were considered and some urban design concepts presented. And there were some questions raised about downtown parking needs and kind of some trends that have taken place since the last time a parking study was prepared for the downtown. That study was dated 2002, and the city council thought at that time that, from this last meeting in spring, that it was time that we update that, that parking study and consider some of the changes that have occurred in our downtown and what our downtown would look like. And in order to do that, we would need to request an adjustment to the consultant services that we currently had in place. So, since the time of that meeting, or that series of meetings, staff requests the consultants to prepare a scope of service that would address these concerns. And we're happy to inform you that we've gotten those scope of services, and in order to, to move forward with the progress that has been underway with the PDA-specific plan, the general plan, the EIR, is that we need, we need to adjust the contract amount, approximately $92,000. There's specifically, I think it's 91,364 on this report. And we would also need to adjust the, the budget that was originated in 2014 for the general plan and all of the studies associated with it. So, you will see that as part of this recommendation. Some of those costs are offset by the grants that the city has received for the downtown, for the PDA. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, this includes more than the downtown? It's the P, the whole PDA area?
So, so just.
Priority development area?
Right, the PDA area. So, just to recap, I know that we have an item tonight about the Millbury Stationary Specific Plan, and I want to give a distinction between what the parking offers in the, in the specific plan versus what we're looking at for this contract adjustment. The studies for the Millbury Stationary Specific Plan and the, and the comprehensive access plan that we, you may hear tonight, primarily covers parking issues related to transit passengers and, and station area development. It does not look at the items and the issues that we discussed at these workshops. It doesn't talk about whether or not we want parallel parking on Broadway, or if we're going to make wider sidewalks, or if we're going to reduce parking. So, this is what this adjustment would do to the contract. This would provide more details and would be in aligned with those studies already in place that are coming forward in the upcoming meetings.
Okay, can we also look at additional parking for many cars and those type of vehicles? If you can squeeze them in anywhere instead of taking away parking? I think that's important. And then there's also been comments as to the size of vehicles that park on Broadway, and because it's diagonal parking, some stick out pretty far. And then the third thing is the curb size. Everybody who's ripped up the front of their cars on Broadway, somehow if we can assist people in not pulling forward or somehow rounding those curbs, it might be helpful. Thank you. Ms. Schneider?
Will this study include, instead of just another parking study, will it include information on creating or create a parking management plan? And will it discuss a parking management district?
Yes, those items were discussed at the workshops. I didn't go over every, every particular item, but to kind of recap, we, we looked at issues related to reuse of city parking lots that we have. We also looked at management programs in downtown. We called it parking management strategies to show how we could recommend parking changes and how they could work. And in order to do that, we need to be a little more precise, and we need the consultant to, to look at those strategies and those comments that were received from that public input. So, that, that would be included.
Great. And I know you're aware, but the public may not be aware, that our Community Enhancement Advisory Committee has a subcommittee that's been looking at parking. At their meeting last week, they handed out a survey of various types of parking issues citywide. So, this goes from the top of the hill down to Bayside Manor. And I hope that there is a process in there that the Community Enhancement Subcommittee and that committee can be part of this process.
Well, that's heard, I am actually the staff liaison to that committee, as you are aware of, and, and we are working together. I see some of the members out in the audience. So, we're, we're looking at all the input that's needed to move ahead. We want to move ahead. We understand that this is a priority, and we want to work in concert with the other documents that are coming forward very, very soon to you.
Excellent. Thank you.
No further questions, move approval of item seven. Yes, Mr. Lee?
I didn't catch, is there going to be some, is the study going to also address the impact on the neighboring areas around the business district?
As I recall, in those workshops, we, we discussed some impacts and uses, whether there was an existing parking program or, or a paid program, or uses that may affect parking lots, such as restaurants and El Camino parking as well. So, I think there were a lot of issues raised, and that's all been incorporated in the scope of services. So, I could, I could assure, yes.
And the other thing that concerns me is that we have continuously, people are using Millbury as long-term parking. They drop off the cars, and they take Uber to the airport, and they get free parking over the weekends. So, I'm thinking that we need to address that, either shorten our 72-hour limit or something. And this would apply to cars that, you know, most, that, that people would call and not, you know, just indiscriminately tagging cars, but.
I think we're going to have to bring parking up at another time because we have to deal with.
Well, I'm just saying.
No, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
I do.
And I move for approval.
We have a lot of issues. Thank you. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Ms. Schneider, your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Pappin?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, Mr.?
Wait, want to vote?
Oh, yeah, okay, announce the votes. Consent calendar, item number seven passed unanimously.
Yeah, I think we all got an email regarding this subject, so I was wondering if staff can give us a, a brief update, the importance of this program and overall, and is this just a small part of this program that's being asked? But it'd be nice to get a whole overview of what's going on and why we're doing this so the public understands why we're spending money on this.
This is regarding item nine.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. The financial system update was approved in 2016, and this was to integrate a number of disparate systems, including a financial system, community development system, utility billing system, accounts receivable system, payroll system, integrated into one single system. We are most, we have completed implementing the financial portions and payroll portions of the system. We're in the midst of completing the community development and utility billing systems. But as we're going through implementation, we recognized the need to consider using a cloud or software-as-a-service model, meaning that rather than hosting the technology and servers at City Hall, they will be hosted and redundantly by the vendor, Tyler Technologies. There is a higher annual cost, but that is offset both by savings in the, both by savings and technical costs for the city, but also in, in savings of technical equipment and staff costs. So, the, the purchase was already adopted in 2016, and these changes, again, are primarily to move the system into the cloud and adopt some service, this service for a five-year period. Some of the benefits of the system have already been realized, for example, the ability to better manage purchase orders, contracts with vendors, a sure, proper approval process has been followed. That's been significant. Departments are better able to manage their financials and their budgets and track their own contracts and agreements through a wide-open system that's available to everyone and relatively easy to use. So, we are, we are seeing the benefits. We're, we're looking at saving staff time, optimizing their, their use onto more valuable projects for the city and its residents. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Lee?
So, the consultant was, went through a bidding process, am I correct?
The Tyler Technologies project, yes, that was a bid project. I believe there were three respondents to that project, and this vendor was selected through that process.
And they've, and this. And they've, and this company met all our criteria in the bidding process, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully that answers people's question, thank you.
What was that last part? What'd you say?
I hope the public understands.
I said, I hope the public understands, answers the public's question about this project, thank you.
Sorry, okay, you're moving approval?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Councilmember Oliva, seconded by Councilmember Lee. Ms. Schneider?
Aye.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Papen, aye.
Consent calendar, item number nine passed unanimously.
Okay, we've already approved item 10. Item 11, again, I'd like someone to address this. This is adoption of a resolution to the city manager to execute a professional services agreement, not to exceed $400,000 for the participation of a comprehensive access plan for the Millbrae Intermodal Center, well overdue and late, but please. Tom, thank you.
It's now in its way. So Mayor Papen and members of the council, so this particular item is on the Comprehensive Access Plan for the Millbrae Intermodal Station. As the mayor had mentioned, this has been an item that's been forthcoming for a little bit over a year, I believe. It may have even initially been spoken of during the development of the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plans, maybe it's more than a year. Either way, the city is on a group that's called the Intermodal Working Group. I'm a member representing the city, and that Intermodal Working Group includes BART, Caltrain, SAM Trans, SFO, and the city of Millbrae, and we're basically working together with the partner transit agencies to look at access at the station with a lot of the changes that are coming forward with the development around the station through the implementation of the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan. The partner agencies, the transit providers, want to make sure that, one, that access is preserved and is improved to the station for the different modes, and then also, more importantly, with high-speed rail coming forward, the potential, with high-speed rail coming into Millbrae, there was a need to look at how that's going, how high-speed rail will interact with the others rail, the fixed rail that's there, BART and Caltrain, as well as parking, you know, how will high-speed rail potentially affect parking throughout Millbrae as that gets built out? And so this, the partner agency funding all came into play in November, and so now we're ready to have this executed and move forward with this project.
Okay, the importance of this for those viewing, Millbrae Station is a high-speed rail stop by law, so when and if that ever happens, it will impact the station, and I know that staff is concerned that high-speed rail has kicked out two years, their, what, EIR? So we are going to proceed with this project because it's vitally important right now with the developments proposed in and around the station area, and we had a pre-meeting with BART and the airport prior to this meeting, and the airport, as many of us has explained, the access in and out of this station area is exceptionally important to commuters, tourists, everybody who comes in and out of there, so we look forward to what is addressed here and also will be impacted by developments that happen, so this is extremely important. We look forward to this analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval?
So moved.
Second? Moved by Mayor Papen, seconded by Mayor Lee. Ms. Schneider?
Aye.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
I can't say that word.
Ms. Oliva?
I just can't say it.
Mayor Papen, aye.
Consent calendar, item number 11 passed unanimously.
Okay, no public hearings, we're going to move on to existing business, but before we do, real briefly here, I'd like to, because this whole area is moving forward here, I'd like to suggest that if we can with the council, some other developers are coming in around that area, whether we can have a, either a closed session or put it on the agenda to discuss the potential developments that are not TOD 1 and not TOD 2, I don't know what you're going to call them, but certain actions are occurring in that area, and I think we need to discuss them. So does anybody on the council have an objection to that? Can we get some agreement?
Absolutely.
Okay, we got an agreement, so we'll work with staff to make that happen. Okay, moving on to existing business, we have the Gateway Millbrae Station Project. There are several aspects to this, and I guess Mr. Van Avery is going to talk. So, yes, Mr. Lee?
It's Mr. Van Avery, are you going to speak first, or did you want to speak, or you don't have nothing to add?
I did-
Okay, well, I would like to vote on each of these elements, because I agree with most of the elements except for one, so I like to make my voice known.
Before that all goes ahead here, there are several issues throughout the-
Yeah, and I have some discussion issues too.
All right, so let's try to come up with the best way to address this.
I think one at a time, that just shouldn't-
Yeah, one at a time, and maybe take the straw poll of the council, the consensus.
Okay, well, there's, I think the most important aspect is the development agreement. Is that the appropriate place to-
Well, yeah, start from number one and work our way down, and then we can just vote on each one, or you can, that's what I would like to do.
Well, I think they all come back to the development agreement, because if you're-
We're going to come back to this.
Yeah, we're going to come back to item one. Legal counsel?
It's really up to the pleasure of the council. I would say there are issues that touch on more than one of the items, so you might want us, before taking a vote on any of them, solicit any comments or questions about each one, perhaps in order, or you could start with the development agreement. And then, you know, I would say after you've had your discussions, unless you have questions for the developer, then we could take a vote on each item.
Okay, my suggestion is that we dive into the development agreement and try to get as much of the minor things out of the way, and then see where we can go from there. And I talked to staff about some of these things, but obviously, there's been no order given to those, that's very disappointing. So we're trying to be productive and get things resolved with staff. There are certain things that I would request be clarified. Let's start with the primary one here, which was misrepresented in the agreement, as to Millbrae's contribution, and I'm trying to figure out what page that's on now. It's just the way that it's written, it doesn't accurately represent Millbrae's contribution. So what page is that on?
I think it's page 10?
Page 10.
If I-
Okay, yeah, top of page 10, and this is really hard to follow, so I'm sorry, says the city will contribute 2.88 million in city funds by means of an agreement to be negotiated to support the provision of an additional 5% onsite affordable housing to be built by the developer. The understanding, I believe, and just discussed with one council member, is that the city's contribution would be going to the separate affordable housing unit building and not to the extra 5% by the developer, so this needs to be cleared up, and I thought you all would have some language to do that.
I can clarify that. This language was existing language, and it was directed at the additional 5% that the developer was offering, over and above the 15% that the city was requiring with regard to the standalone building. So I would suggest, just to clarify it, I mean, since this was written, the developer has offered an additional 5% to be included in the market rate building, so just to make sure it's clear, we would suggest adding language in the standalone building to that last sentence in section 2.3.7, just to be very clear that the city contribution is going towards the standalone building, the veterans' building.
To be very, very clear, because I would like it cleared throughout, whenever you refer to a standalone building, I think it's more appropriate that we say the developer's proposed standalone building, because we need, I think it's important to be clear here that that was not part of our station plan, and this was the developer's idea, so that needs to be clarified. Are there any objections to that?
I'm not quite sure what you mean, but some of the hotels are standalone too.
You can't hear?
This is the affordable, standalone affordable housing building then?
Okay, so you have to be, like, specific to that, because-
But we're not referring to any other building, the other thing's just called the hotel.
So let's be clear, if we're going to be clear, let's be perfectly clear.
Okay.
Because there are standalones other than just the affordable housing building.
Okay. If we could, throughout this agreement, where it's referred to as the standalone affordable housing unit or building, this is the developer's proposed affordable standalone building. Yes, ma'am?
Can we call it veterans' preferred housing building?
That's not the way it's described.
But we're changing that, so I'm asking if we can change it as veterans' preferred housing.
Well, let-
The document-
It's in there, but it's not in the same places.
I think we're on the same page, but I'm just trying to make it look a little different.
The document does define a term of art called the affordable housing component, which is referred specifically to that, to that building, so the neatest way to do it would be in the definition of the affordable housing component, that we add that other text indicating the developer's proposed standalone affordable housing building, and that way we can then refer to it using the term of art.
And what would that do to the other affordable aspect?
Well, we've called that, it's in the market rate housing component, so when we refer to it, and not all of the terms of the affordable housing provisions would pertain to the 5% in the affordable, in the market rate housing component, because there's financing language that's specific to the standalone building, and so that wouldn't apply to the market rate building. So I think we've, it's clear in there, we can clarify it further, but I think you would specifically wanted to get some language in there about the, I guess, the history or the genesis of this standalone affordable housing component.
Okay, it was in one other area too, so can we, does anyone object to having that clarified throughout? I forget the other document, I tried to mention it to staff. I would have taken better notes, but wherever it shows up in that way, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay?
Is what all right? What are we saying exactly?
We are clarifying throughout the development agreement and wherever it shows up in this rest of the pile that we got, that when you refer to the standalone affordable housing unit, it's the developer's proposed affordable housing, single building.
Well, it's all, it's all, it's all part of the same thing, it's fine.
Yeah, okay, no objections. All right.
I'm sorry, Mayor, do you mean affordable, standalone affordable housing unit or building?
Building.
However it's preferred-
Building, to me, is better than unit.
We-
Yeah.
The words component, the final word, I'm sorry.
We are clarifying that definition.
Okay.
While I look for the rest, Ms. Schneider, did you have something?
If we're starting this off, I only have three general areas. First, I want to thank staff, because we had a, what I thought was a great meeting yesterday to go over all of the documents in minute detail, and I understand that there's a number of small corrections that need to be made throughout the document, and that we can go ahead and vote tonight, even with those corrections, like the start time of construction is consistent in all five documents and things like that. So I really want to thank staff for all the time you took with me, and also that most of my concerns are going to come back to us or come back to the planning commission in the form of the design review process. With that, I do have three sort of general areas I wanted the developer to know that I was concerned about. One was, we are waiting for the finalized FEMA maps, and we worked, we talked about language that would make sure that we're working from the most recently approved FEMA maps, and that we do everything we can do to make sure that we have as flood-proofed as possible, or as ground-sinking as possible, given the new information that's coming down about the Bay Area subsiding in general. The second question is another law that may not have been represented in the document called CalGreen. It comes from the Cal Recycles Agency that stipulates a higher level of recycling and reuse during construction and demolition, so didn't want it to come as a surprise to you, that I'm, of course, pushing as close to zero waste as we can get. The law stipulates 65%. And the third one, this is my personal desire, the BART Plaza, I don't have a really good sense of how big it's going to be, but I think it's going to be a great space to have public events. It could even be large enough to have a temporary ice skating rink, and if so, if the power supply in building 5A or 5B is great enough to handle a potential ice skating rink, I know this is a design review issue, but I think we could kill a couple of birds with one stone if we can just open ourselves up to an adequate power supply for these big energy-use special events. Thank you.
Okay, that brings up another issue I had regarding the completion of the hotel aspect. It's unclear as to the number of rooms, if that is delayed, and it also says up to one year, and that's bothersome. So the proposed hotel is 164 rooms. Does anyone have an objection to adding that specific number into, wherever that is? Where is that?
It's on page B3, which is Exhibit B, and it's to Exhibit A to Attachment 2. So Attachment 2 is the development agreement, is the ordinance with the development agreement. Exhibit A to that attachment is the development agreement itself, and towards the very back of that document is Exhibit B to the development agreement, and the discussion of the consequences for failing to meet the delivery for the hotel component are on page B3 in the middle.
Okay, so we would be adding the 164 rooms that would then be the 85% of?
Right.
Okay, and then, this said, the delay hotel payment shall be limited to an aggregate of no more than 12 months of payments. I have an issue with that, does anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I think we want to also look at the end of that provision, because it also states that the payment restarts if the hotel component is not delivered within 28 months after the commencement of construction, and so then that payment would then extend through the end, the life of the development term. So there's a window where they, you know, they would pay for a year, then it would stop, but then it would restart if they don't meet the goal of 28 months.
Does anybody speak English? I mean, you guys and your legal stuff.
You're the attorney, you have to-
I am an attorney, and I had a hard time reading that. Jeez.
Say it was heavily negotiated, that's all.
Heavily negotiated, that means, yeah, nobody else understands it either.
They have to pay by the hour.
Okay, is, if the rest of the council's fine on that addition?
They're fine on that.
Okay, does the developer have a disagreement with that?
Okay, I'm trying to go through minor ones.
That should be, that should be the minimum, though.
Pardon me?
It should be a word, minimum, right?
That's what I said, but she didn't.
Should have the word minimum, otherwise you're obligating them to 167 rooms, period.
I believe it allows-
Yeah, but it says, it does clearly say that it's the, you can go from 164, I think, to 180, but for purposes of this section, I think it's fair to say the minimum.
Yeah, minimum.
Is that okay?
It would be for 164 rooms.
Yeah, well, 85% of 164.
Correct.
You'd have to go with that. Now, the cost that's estimated there, I think the developer's hotel person said they'd be asking for a lot more, but we won't get picky on that part. Okay, yeah, I wanted to be clear throughout this, and it was a little unclear, where, on page one, we are not giving up any rights to the Street of Aviador. Now, page one, the last paragraph there, I believe, where we're trying to interpret that as just a barrier or a boundary, but there are other places in this agreement that might kind of open the door there, so I would like to be very clear, we are not giving up any rights, easements, or interests- So I would like to be very clear, we are not giving up any rights, easements, or interests in the street of Aviador.
So, Madam Mayor, in that second paragraph of recital C, I was going to suggest we delete the words Highline Canal and Aviador Street from the description of the potential properties to be transferred. I would note that the development agreement calls for there to be an exhibit that clearly delineates the property transfers. The primary property that belongs to the city that would be transferred is the portion that's part of the right-of-way of Millbrae Avenue, beginning at Rollins Road where the city sign is, and extending along Rollins Road, and that is the developer's Art Walk. And we need to do a real estate transaction with the developer to convey that property because they need to, and that would be conveyed to BART, because they need that property in order to count towards the full development of their parcel. We're going to take back an easement to enable us to continue our maintenance of the Millbrae Avenue overpass bridge. So we're, the, we need to negotiate that real estate agreement before we sign the development agreement, so we will get specific in terms of the actual meets and bounds description of that, of that property, and that will be added as Exhibit 2. And the council will be involved in the terms of any transfer. I also mentioned, I think someone raised a question about the Millbrae welcoming sign, the replacement of that would be a, one of the terms that'd be addressed in the real estate negotiation for that property, because that would need to be replaced somewhere.
Okay, before we get there.
Yeah.
Do we all have a clear understanding of Aviador and not giving up any rights to that? So we would appreciate any clarification you can make in the agreement that...
Just so it's clear, in the, if someone's really paying attention to the, all the documents, the developer's proposed vesting tentative map did show a potential parking area on Aviador, but in the conditions of approval, it's been made very clear that that is not included. Doesn't mean the council couldn't later make some other decision as to what to do with it, but we've been very clear, both is it in the vesting tentative map?
And the site development.
And the site development plan, that those references, that the use of that is not being given over to parking. And I just note that we're attaching both of those as exhibits to development agreement, and we're going to proceed those exhibits with statements to reflect the development conditions that basically change the exhibits.
Okay.
That's clear, hopefully.
All right, Aviador has a long history with BART, and we've made assurances to the surrounding neighborhoods, so we would like to maintain that, control of that. Okay, and you did bring up another aspect, if I might, the city entryway sign. What was proposed by staff, referred to it as kind of an ordinary sign, that is not appropriate as to how it's being described here, it's more of a monument. Staff was going to try to get some further language, but I haven't heard back. So that is something that we need to maintain, or needs to be replaced in such a fashion that it's not just going to be, you know, right now it's a sign, it's lighted, it has landscaping, everything, and if you are negotiating that away, we need a replacement of same or similar something. And it should come before the city council, because this is important.
Does it go to planning first?
It could go to planning first, but right now, as it's written in what I read, it only goes to planning, and we need it to come to us.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, I've got three agreements. Somebody want to explain? I've asked yesterday, so please.
It's also what I asked yesterday, that in, all signage should come back to council as opposed to just planning commission.
You want the entire sign program for the, for the development, all the storefronts?
I don't think the entire sign program, I'm talking about the entryway.
Right, so the entry level sign, there can be a separate condition that says that that will be subject to council review and approval, and as the assistant city attorney has indicated, it will be part, it can be made part of the real estate negotiation for the Millbrae Avenue piece of property.
It must be made part of the real estate.
So that can be a condition that could be added to the site development plan, taking the language out of the master sign program condition, and just making a separate condition to deal with the monument sign.
Mayor, can I clarify?
I think that's, yes, Ms. Schneider?
So what I had talked to staff about yesterday is, the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee is the one that has been dealing with signage, even though planning approves a signage policy, Community Enhancement works on the enforcement of it, and it's a request that the developer would work with that committee in addition to planning on signage. But to be honest, for wayfair signage, especially for the bicycle pedestrian work, that they also work with Park and Rec Commission Bike Pedestrian Committee to make sure that the signs, when they come out, work for cyclists. Just a way of kind of expanding who they're going to talk to.
So if you, again, if that is something that the council wants, the master sign program, that condition could be modified to indicate that the Community Enhancement Committee and Parks and Recreation Commission, their recommendations on wayfinding and other issues could then come to the planning commission, and those would have to, those two bodies would have to meet and talk about that, and make a recommendation before the planning commission considered the sign program.
Okay, hold on, this is getting big here. Okay, that's kind of a separate thing here. I think we had, first off, we had an agreement, Mr. Van Avery's up here, as to the monument one. Mr. Van Avery, do you have something to say about that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Michael Van Avery, President and CEO of Republic, Family of Companies. We, we are in agreement with the monument, we understand how important that is, that's a gateway, it's an actual gateway for the city coming in, we totally understand that. But let's, let's be reasonable. We have a specific design review that we have application in, we feel that that will be vetted through the planning commission. It's, we have to deal with a lot of wayfinding issues with BART as we make, you know, different recommendations for...
Can, I'd like to take those two separately, so if you could just address the monument one, and then we can get to the other one?
I'm in agreement with the monument process.
Okay, now you can, the other ones, when you're talking wayfinding and stuff, I do think that, you know, I mean, you just listed a whole bunch of things, I don't, I mean, I'm not sure we need to go through all that, but I get...
I mean, we're supposed to be going through an ex, our development agreement contemplates an expedited plan process, and, you know, we have to go through staff and design review that's a community process. I think it's, you know, additional steps, understanding where we're at in the process, when I want to start construction on this project by end of year potentially. Remember, we can't begin one design, I can't do any, I can't design draw if we have numerous committees and, you know, bureaucratic processes, that's the point of this development agreement. So with the monument sign, I'm 100% in agreement with the other wayfinding program that should go with your municipal code, there shouldn't be any added extra layers of bureaucracy.
I'm in agreement with that. Mr. Lee?
The planning commission is a separate body and distinct in itself, any things that doesn't come to the, that gets appealed from the planning commission comes to the city council, so we're just kind of bypassing all planning commissions, I'd object to, because we've, when I was on a planning commission, one of the problems was, some of the commissioners didn't want to weigh in on certain projects because they thought that, they wanted to know what the council felt. And I thought that was inappropriate, because it's supposed to be independent body, and they're supposed to do their own thing. So I really object to us interfering with the planning commission's...
On the monument thing, or the...
Signs in general.
Signs in general, well, I think we've got two separate issues here.
Well, the sign, the monument is a sign.
Well, it can, I think, normally go through planning, but I'm just, I think we are in agreement that it does need to come to the council, and it's not written that way now.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Okay, well, I think you lose on that one, so.
I think I lose too.
You lose, okay, so let's just be clear here, how many council members think that the monument, as we're referring to it, should come before, it can go through planning, but also the council? Okay, we got Ms. Schneider, Mr. Holliver, Ms. Papman, Ms. Aliva?
Nay.
And Mr. Lee, nay. Okay, so, sorry, lose on that one. I'll be losing on some later.
I don't want to make a bigger problem with, I'm just, we have a bicycle pedestrian committee that has to be active so that it can go out and receive grants, but I don't want this to be a problem. If we can work internally within Millbrae, to just make sure that the BPAC Subcommittee of Park and Rec knows when your wayfinding signs are coming out, we make them be part of the solution.
Councilmember, and we have, we've been very active with the bicycle community, the Bay Trail's been a central part of this plan, so, you know, again, we just, we will, we've outreach to those folks, they've had massive input into our plans. Our thing is, we want to be able to take this to one body. If it so goes beyond that body, to Mayor Lee's point, then we understand.
I'm okay with that.
Councilmember Lee, excuse me.
Okay. I would like, and I'm sorry, there's just no way around this here, I'm referring to the ordinance approving the development agreement, wherever we cite to the hotel, is it possible to say, I know it's identified as 164, but then in another place it says up to 180? Do we have to, should we be clear throughout? Of course, we love more hotel rooms, you know, as long as it, because it's like, on this agreement, Attachment 2, it says 164 hotel room hotel, but that's it. I think we want to provide the leeway as much as possible throughout this, I mean, if that's a minimum of, then it should be described as such.
I could ask Mr. Conner's opinion on this, my thought would be, since it's already in the development agreement, it's up to 180, it's pretty clear.
But I think we want a minimum too.
I mean, we can modify it in the ordinance if you'd like, 164 to 180.
Well, I'd say the one limitation is, we aren't making determinations in terms of the impact of that with traffic, so I think the assumption is 164, I know that's stated, I see it in the front page of Attachment 3, and also the Attachment 4 is a specific condition of use permit for the hotel use, and that says 164. You know, I'm not sure there's any reason to vary from that, I mean, I think at this point, we're sort of locked into that, so maybe the best thing would be to take it, to take out the minimum language and just simply use 164 consistently through all the documents. I understand the desire to maybe have more, but I think that's pretty much where we're going.
I don't like your idea, we want, if it can go up to 180, we'll take it.
I think that's allowed in the development agreement.
Yeah, it's allowed in the development agreement.
So it's, I think it's okay.
I don't want them to come back, if they want to do more, we'll let them do more.
Okay, so.
So Mayor, can I clarify that it's 164 up to 180, is that...
Yeah, and feel free, if you want more than that, come back.
I think there's some traffic issues, but yeah, we'll be a minimum of 164.
Thank you.
So, just again, since we have to keep track of what you're changing, you want it to say not less than 164, but up to 180, we can certainly write that there was, there was a larger number of units evaluated in the IR. However, the parking, the hotel site is already underparked, so through the design review process and through the parking management plan, we'd have to look at, if there were more rooms, we'd have to figure out how to make sure the parking worked for that. So we can write a condition that accomplishes that.
Thank you, I would appreciate that, and we're hopeful that it's being closed, so close to the airport, people won't need to park. So, okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out where the other questions were here. Those were the easy ones. Now we may get to some ones where I'm going to lose. Okay. Hold on one second, is anybody else can pipe in while I'm looking? Mr. Holliver?
I have a relatively simple one. In the staff report on page 11, it references pavement condition index, and this is regarding to streets around the development area, correct? Not within the development area? Okay, but within the development area, these are, okay. Within the development area, these would be private streets, correct? Not public streets?
Except for Rollins.
Council, Councilmember Holliver, that is correct. We will be evaluating the condition of the pavement prior to start of construction and establishing its pavement condition index, and then we will compare that after the construction and make sure that the streets are restored to their original conditions. I suspect, you know, we can do the same thing for the private street, but the condition applies to public streets.
Okay, thank you. Can we set a PCI standard within the development area? Require the developer to maintain at least a certain PCI over time so that, you know, we make sure that those, within the development, it doesn't turn to rubble at some point? I know you, I know your incentives are to keep it, keep it maintained, but can that be something that we, you know, have a base level PCI within the development area?
Streets, you could, you could require a certain level of maintenance requirements from the perspective of payment conditioning index.
I can't hear you.
For private streets, you are cap, you can require through a maintenance agreement that a certain level of payment condition will be maintained for private street. For public streets, I think that becomes more of a legal question, as far as whether we can require such a standard for public streets.
Yeah, my question is about private streets within the development area.
I mean, our CCNRs, you know, will dictate the maintenance items, we can agree to some standard in the CCNR.
Okay. I mean, I guess that's something down the road in the design review period that can be addressed, but...
It's an engineering design review issue.
But I would like to see that included, just to make sure that there is a maintenance standard of the street condition at that time.
Okay, I have another issue, I'm thankful that there's going to be an updated shuttle study to be considered with the subsequent entitlements, and I'm thankful developers paying for it, but I would prefer that the city contract for that and oversee that. Is that doable, and do my colleagues agree? You've got a shuttle study, am I losing you all over there? No, no what? Okay, do my colleagues agree with that?
You mean the tra, shuttles, traffics?
Part of the, right.
Right.
This is the shuttle study, right, comes in and out here.
Yeah.
We need to update that.
That's fine.
It's being recommended in the...
Madam Mayor, I don't know why we need a city, independent city study, and we should be able to conduct that study as a condition and move forward.
No offense, but I feel better if the city does it.
Madam Mayor, we've spent hundreds, millions of dollars on this issue, and frankly, you know, this is a last minute item that got in the last one, you can peer review it, which you typically do, but we should be able to conduct the study.
Again, I'll disagree, I think it's important that the cities maintain control over that. The developer, of course, has a specific interest in the outcome of it, and the impact of the shuttles coming in and out of there, there's already been a question that's come up throughout this discussion, you know, BART will say one thing, Commute.org will say another, I firmly believe that the city should maintain control over who is hired to do this and how it comes out.
Madam, we have to do a very large scale transportation demand study, which will incorporate all modes in and out of this transportation, so we're studying, and we're re-studying, and we're re-studying, I mean, we have a public agency as a partner who has, you know, state, I know, I know, hold on, hold on, I know you don't agree sometimes with them, but they're a large stakeholder in this as well that we represent, and so rest assured, these studies have to, first of all, meet their litmus test of where that goes, in addition to the transportation demand plan that we have to implement, so with all due respect, I think this issue was asked and answered at the last hearing.
Are you done, Mr. Van Avery? Okay, I'm not done on this. This is an extremely important issue to the city of Millbrae, to all the commuters that come in and out of there, who I believe throughout this entire process have been minimized. And I think it's important that this city maintain control over that study, who's hired, who does the study, and the results. Mr. Van Avery has pointed out the different studies that have been done, and even from our peer review of the financial aspect, things come out differently when the city does the study. I think the interests of... I think the interests of the developer will be too controlling as to the outcome. So I'm asking my colleagues here, I think it's important that the city of Millbrae and the interests of Millbrae be controlling and that we should maintain control of this. Does anyone in the council agree or have a comment?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm not so sure why a study would benefit one side or the other. And my bias would be where I come in my line of work, you can get two termite reports and get two different dollar figures or remedies, but yet, the bottom line is that there's work to be done. And so I think that, I'm thinking that, I don't like the word "control" that you're saying. I don't know if we need control, I think we need the study. So I'm not so sure that whoever did the study for what we have would be biased to anybody. Where are you coming with that?
Coming from previous study that was done and a lot of the speakers that have come before us. You get a standard understanding of what that station is, and they throw it in with what everybody else, every other station is. The Millbrae station is very unique. The needs of the residents and the impact that is happening here, I think it is more important than somebody who has a financial interest doing it as to somebody who has the public interest in doing it.
Mayor, I would have to respectfully disagree that if you have an area, yes, you can get different studies because it would be obje, it would be subjective. And now we have to be objective. We have an actual site. So if we have a study on what in fact is in front of us, I would accept it.
That's my problem, you'd accept it. The, I think the public interest should be controlling, yes.
Is there a middle ground here? If the criteria and the methodology could be agreed upon, or the city could review it and accept the methodology, then the company can go ahead and do the study? Because really, it's in the scope of services and the methodology that's going to dictate the results.
Well, the methodology as described leaves out right now, as described. The size of the shuttles is not mentioned in there. There are some other aspects as currently described that are lacking.
That comes with change. I would side, I would agree with Councilmember Schneider.
Mr. Lee?
Well, I mean, there's, the community has a lot of questions about the traffic and the impact of traffic. I don't think there's anything wrong with having an independent study that's not controlled by anybody. So I, it's just a minor thing, you know, just, let's, let's get through this. And I believe that the community would feel better at ease too if they knew it was an independent study.
Councilmember Lee, I would agree with you, not controlled by anybody. And so, but I, hearing the mayor wants to control this, is that what you're asking?
Not me personally. I don't have a financial interest in this. The city of Millbrae and I think the public should be in control of who's hired and the end report there, how it comes out.
And the justification is that staff is supposed to be objective about the whole thing. So that's the reason why, I think, I think that's what the mayor wants, is a more objective approach.
Madam Mayor, point of order, excuse, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilmember Holliver, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I just say, just point of order that it's a delay issue with the design review. And so if it can, you know, that's what we're concerned about, is an independent study would, again, you know, project the, the design review farther into the future. And so that's a big concern of ours. If, if it were to be pushed out a little bit farther, but in terms of maybe a, you know, a building permit or final map condition of some type, that might, that might alleviate things. But I, I agree with the Councilmember Schneider that, you know, this is a, you're still going to have a peer review regardless of what study we do. You're going to have independent peer review on the matter. So if there's disagreements, plus we'll work with staff on the scope of that project and the study to make sure that we're meeting all of the study needs that you're mentioning. So just for context purposes.
For further context purposes, as you mentioned, it will, it could impact your design, and I think that's another reason why it should be a separate item, not controlled by the developer or retention. So that's, Mr. Holliver, you're about the only one who hasn't spoken yet.
Thanks. I was just going to suggest perhaps it could be a joint selection process with the city at the table when that's done. Otherwise, I think I'm comfortable with your suggestion that the city be involved in the study design and methodology design. But I don't think we necessarily have to be the ones that select the consultant to do the study.
That's fair.
And just so you know, we're talking about item 23J in Exhibit, in Attachment Three. So this is a condition of the approval of the site development plan. It's at the, at the top, it's page nine of Attachment Three. I'll just read it. No later than the submittal date of the first design review application for development on the project site, the developer shall provide an updated shuttle study that includes the following information. Total number of shuttles each day, including the arrival and departure times, identity of the shuttle operators, and ridership arriving and departing by time of day. Based upon the updated shuttle stops, the city will make a determination whether the location, configuration, and number of shuttle stops will be sufficient, or if changes are required. If changes are required, they shall be identified by the city, we need a "why" there, and incorporated into design review approvals. And I just, two comments to that. One is I think we also wanted to know the length of the shuttles.
Right.
Because I think that's sort of critical, so I think we can add that in. And if it's okay with the developer, we would say, I provide an updated shuttle study developed by, with the, by a consultant approved by the city.
Put the fox in the chicken house. Go ahead. All right, so let's try to get some resolution here. I think, so definitely, nobody has objection adding the shuttle size to that. If we get to resolution, and the city's a part of, I guess, the process of selecting who does the study, I think we'd, I'd feel better on that. Is that a possibility to work with you on who is contracted with the study?
I think that's what the city attorney recommended, and I'm in agreement, Madam Mayor.
That's what I suggested.
Thank you.
Okay, all right then. Moving along here. I can't be sure, but let's go to the part that I will probably lose out on. Um. Haven't lost yet. Okay, the other part in the staff report. Now, let's approach this in a manner that might be helpful, that this is the divide on El Camino, which I don't think is appropriately even suggested here. Because I don't think it's appropriate for one developer to be responsible for that center divide. This, if I might explain reasoning, public, you are, the council is going to vote on the updated, let me get it right, the language here. Sorry, there's so many documents here. Yes, the overriding considerations and mitigation in this plan, which each and every member of this council should have read through and is going to be affirming. A big part of this is public safety. Now, these developments that are going on, not just urban republics here, but all the developments around the station area are going to add to the population, the workforce, and the number of pedestrians that are going to have to cross or be in and around El Camino Real. And we have too many people jaywalking. Part of the mitigation plans are also adding another turn as they come on, off of Millbrae Avenue onto El Camino Real. This is going to be a huge impact. These mitigation factors say that we've done our very best to ensure public safety. I think it's important that all the developments that happen around that area contribute to putting up a barrier on El Camino Real. I don't think it's appropriate for one developer to be responsible for this, but all of them who are adding to this population and this impact. I think we as a council are responsible for doing the greatest mitigation possible. Sadly, we have no price for any of this. If we can get an agreement from everyone who develops in this area, I think we would be doing our due diligence in trying to ensure public safety by asking each and every one to contribute to that barrier. How does the council feel about that?
Have we heard from public safety on the safety of a barrier?
Well, that's why it's being recommended by staff.
That's one of my questions. Staff has heard from public safety. Mr. Holliver?
I would just like to ask, does staff have any type of a ballpark estimate at this time? I mean, I, I can't imagine it would be that expensive. It's maybe three, four hundred feet long.
Again, we're not talking just you guys, okay? Please.
We're just chatting right now.
Yeah.
Just discussing. You know, I can't imagine it being dramatically expensive. It's only a few hundred feet long and it's a fence, it's not constructing a building or anything else. It's an area that is, I walked by it today, it is irrigated, there is plumbing in the area if you wanted to plant some plants around there.
And we don't want to remove trees either.
Right.
So, and we don't want something that's ugly.
Well, I mean, San Francisco, they put prickly, prickly hedges in the middle. So that's another cheaper option.
My suggestion was something similar, what this would eventually look like is something similar to the divider between El Camino and the little driveway along El Camino by, you know, Fiddler's Green, that area. I can't imagine it being more than, what's at the very, very highest range?
Mr. Van Avery, do you have any idea what something like that? I'm just, I'm not going to hold you to it, okay? But you're in the building business.
Not a $20 million project.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the question. So there's a couple complexities here. A, the item was not studied for one reason or another within the overall kind of mitigation measures or traffic measures. B, it is a Caltrans, you know, and they have pretty significant standards for building. And then C, I would offer that we are paying, you know, a pretty large share of traffic impact fee, you know, with, to your point about that. And I'm, if you mention as a kind of a citywide fee or share, then it would, it would seem fair, like as you've noted, that we would all contribute. So I think you have the, I mean, I don't know the exact dollar amounts that it would take because there's, you'd have to do the study on the linear square footage of how far you want it to run. There was kind of an arbitrary attempt of defining what that is. So, you know, I think we, the way it's characterized is that it is kind of, should be studied within, as our, as we do our engineering of the project, and that, you know, the impact fees that we pay would go for that fair share of those costs of whatever that ends up being.
Then you didn't answer my question though. Any idea?
I think it's about.
Come on, give me a dollar sign. I'm not going to hold you to it.
I would honestly defer to the Public Works Director, who, who, well.
See, now this is a sad thing. Staff recommends this, and nobody, and nobody even has a suggestion.
Let me make the record clear, I'm not the Public Works Director. Key limit is, but I think, I guess there are two, there are two items that really affect this. Is the length of the fence, if you will, and the type of the fence.
A what?
The type, what type of fence.
A length and type, excuse me.
And the length. And essentially, the extent for which it's going to be constructed. And I think, you know, you're looking at, I suspect somewhere from 50 to about $250 a foot, depending on, you know, what you incorporate in it. And then if it's 500 feet, then you're looking at, you know, 500 times 250, which is about $125,000.
We're in a sad quandary here that nobody has any facts. Ms. Schneider?
Well, Madam Mayor, construction costs are really difficult to predict these days, so that's why we're hedging.
Couple of questions. It's my understanding that in the park's master plan, Park will be giving us an update of how they're going to handle the median strip on El Camino Real. So I would be hesitant to do anything with a fence while we're still waiting for that study. Two, and I love the little fence between southbound El Camino Real and the frontage road, but I see people hop over it all the time. So a short fence may not stop the jaywalking problem, so it's not quite so simple as that. And third, I think we just approved a plan that may, tonight, the, the circulation.
Access.
Access plan, I hope is going to look at all of El Camino, and if not then, in the plan, development area plan. It's also going to look at how people are crossing El Camino Real. So we have two plans that we're currently paying for that could look in detail of what really needs to be there to stop people jaywalking. So I'd rather not tie it to this at this point in time. That doesn't mean they won't pay their fair share, but let's get the studies done in a logical process. That's where I'm at.
I would agree. Well, I'll disagree with my council here because we're here to deal with these things now. It's not something you can come back to.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
May I suggest that from my, you know, I had a discussion with staff today. One of the burdens for this project is dealing with Caltrans, that they, you know, that is a very long process. It's something that we, certainly not fair to have the developers have to do. So that would be something that the city would work on. Would it be reasonable to perhaps, you know, ask that the developers, if we ever do build this, if we decide that this is the right thing to do, to ask for a reimbursement up to some token dollar amount, $25,000, $30,000, something like that? You know, assuming that the staff, and we ask the other developers in the area to pay their fair share as well, TOD1 and any others coming down the road. Is that something that would be reasonable, Mr. Van Avery?
If it's shared, as noted.
Of course.
I mean, I think it's, it sounds like it's important. I would only add that in coordination with the regional, you know, districts, Caltrans and others, and, you know, that there's, and there's opportunities. I would also just respectfully add that opportunities to access grant or infrastructure dollars when available. We do have a great public partner, you've been a great public partner. Those are things that we can go after together as well to bring money into Millbrae for those kinds of uses. I would add, respectfully add that we, you know, it takes a village to make these things happen.
Right, correct.
Okay, so we have, I think we have somewhat of an agreement here. So that was a nice suggestion, Mr. Holliver.
I have, I, again, I'm concerned about the notion of fair cost because then we have to then look at next to studies and everything else. So I would suggest perhaps the council think about this being a capital project for the city, and that this developer is contributing a certain, up to a certain set amount, and that you have an opportunity when TOD1 comes in, there's other land within the TOD area on that, on the west side, that developer contribute, rather than trying to do fair share because.
No, that, I don't like that suggestion. And your staff report here, that really goes against what we're trying to do here. We're trying to, as we, the council, have to ensure the mitigation, and that's the whole idea of bringing this up as to public safety, pedestrian safety, all of that. I appreciate Mr. Van Avery working with us here. It is the full impact of not only the developments on the west side, but the entire station area. And I think it's fair, I like what Mr. Holliver said, if we can come up with an amount that's fair, if, like Mr. Avery said, Caltrans is improving El Camino, we need to reach out to them as well. This is just a huge public safety issue, I think, needs to be dealt with. Yes, Tom?
One thing that staff is concerned with though, as far as the fair share, is how we determine that moving forward. So right now, we know we have TOD1 before us, TOD2 before us, we don't know what will come at us over time, and what's that time horizon?
Well, that's the whole thing we're talking about right now because nothing's going to happen tomorrow. But if we can get consensus from TOD1, TOD2, and as I mentioned earlier, I would like to get the council acting right now on these other, the seven dwarfs and the whole area there. I think we can get a price, get a region here, talk to the partners, talk to grants and everything, and make this a reality. But this is a huge public safety concern. If we're, I think we're getting. If we're, I think we're getting good ideas here, but this is important for everyone to participate in. And yes, sadly, the city is the one who has to deal with Caltrans in getting this done. But it's important, I think, that everybody, as Mr. Van Avery said, the village comes together on this. And I appreciate, again, I didn't think this was fair to throw it all on you guys, but anyone in the station area who's building from this point on, I think, should be included in that. Is that all right? Are we heading in the right direction?
Yeah, I would just like to ask for some type of language to, you know, we can agree on here that would be enforceable down the road if we...
This has to be inclusive of everybody, so anything that would defer.
Madam Mayor, I think in the condition of approval, you could put this, place it, so it's earmarked within, at least our fair share.
Okay. Can we do something like that? And we need to include...
I say, I don't think we need to do another NEXA study for this, but I think if we could come up with, you know, an estimated figure of what, you know, the fair share for TOD-1, TOD-2, TOD whatever else.
Station, any developments in the station area?
The city, there's already, no.
At some future point.
Yeah. Or, or throw a number out now that we can all agree on.
I, I would suggest it'd be good to put some bounds around this so it's clear. So, in other words, maybe a rough way to split it is one-third, one-third, one-third. So, if Republic pays a third, TOD-1 pays a third, any future developer on the remainder of TOD-1 pays a third of future costs. And I don't know if you want to cap it or not. That would be...
I think we should cap it. That's not fair to leave something hanging.
Yeah, future costs dealing with Caltrans.
What was the high end estimate, one fifty? Two fifty?
Going ones.
One-third of that? Is that, is that reasonable?
A hundred thousand?
No.
Actual cost, not to exceed...
Three, three, three.
And we're talking, huh?
Oh, go ahead, pick a number.
Eighty thousand, I don't know. Is that fair?
I think we can get by generally here. Mr. Van Avery, we don't want to delay things any further. We appreciate your working with us on this.
Thank you, Madam.
So, why don't you all, somebody try to get an estimate so that he has an idea, so that every developer that comes forward. If somebody go online right now and look them up.
May I suggest, Madam Mayor, as part of, we can work with staff as part of our improvement plans. We can come up with some separate estimates with that that could establish some baseline. I mean...
Thank you.
It's, it's not that hard. We can, we can come up with some baselines. I just, I don't want to be put on the spot and give you a number. I have, I have a little problem with talking about walls and building walls. I'm concerned about that.
Yeah.
As a Northern California Democrat.
Noted. There might be extra material left over from somebody else's, but we're not going to use that.
Sorry, just for clarification, I know this is just a very minor thing, but I'd also include plants as part of that, shrubbery to sort of, you know, we don't want just a metal wall in the middle of the median. We want it to look attractive.
He was joking on the wall.
Understood.
Yeah, Caltrans specifications.
Yeah, they got all that.
Thank you.
Okay.
What is it?
Yeah, and the Grand Boulevard, as was noted from our...
Mexico.
Okay. As a, anybody else here? Okay. As a final note for the record, legal counsel, we have clarified, previous discussions, that the veterans preferred could be incorporated into market rate housing and still maintained. So, could you give us your legal opinion, Mr. Connor?
Yeah, I, I looked into just, I think last meeting, we had some concern in terms of the legality of different types of preferences. So, I looked, and I don't see any legal limitation preventing a veterans preference. In fact, there's veterans preference housing all over. Same thing with limiting it to, you know, there's a discussion of city employees also in the DA, as well as, I believe... negatively affecting one particular group such that it would raise a civil rights concern. So, I think there's some freedom there. It might, you know, it might be different in a different city, but I think, especially because it's not, some of these are not geographically limited, I don't see a concern.
So, to be clear, we understand that there are different funding issues. My preference all along is that all of the housing be integrated and that our veterans not be in a separate building. I think they succeed when joined with everyone else and that it would all be together. So, that's why we're clarifying that at this point in time. So, the city of Millbrae is contributing to the separate unit with the veterans preferred, and, but the funding is still not fully there. And that's why I think we need to be clear on this, that Millbrae requires fifteen percent affordable housing, and we want to see that happen. So, should there reach any complications in the future, we're not in a position to further fund anything within these development projects. We want to see them happen, and we hope they do happen, but there are concerns. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, thank you. So, Menlo Park, they've, they're building a unit, BMR unit with preferred for firemen and teachers. So, they, I think they approved that. So, it can be done. And I also spoke, some other veterans have spoken to me, and they've said that they, they don't like the single building because they feel that stigmatizes veterans. But, you know, that's another veteran. So, there's obviously two sides that, you know, have different opinions. My concern's the same as the mayor's, is that the funding for the, this affordable housing, and I know that Republic is earnest about it, but it's going to be run by a corporate, for-profit corporation, Core, and there is no guarantee that the grant money will be raised. There's no guarantee that the economy cannot tank. You know, we all say, oh, yeah, it cannot tank, but look what happened to nine eleven. Stock market crashed, the bubble, the, the housing bubble. You know, we have history of thinking that anything's going to go great, and then things tank. So, I really would like to make sure that we have the affordable housing. And I thank Republic for coming up with five percent because actually, in our haste, as I understand from staff briefing, in our haste to do the specific plan, because Republic, though the units are going to be rental units, they're not required to have any BMRs. We, as a council, did not require BMRs for, when the developer's ready. So, thank you for doing the five percent. But to ensure that we get at least something, I would like to ask another five percent, which is normal for rental units development, which is ten percent. So, I'm just requesting if you could do that. So, we at least can guarantee we have some BM, the amount of requisite minimum amount of BMRs at the unit.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, Mayor. I, I think this, this debate went on last time. I think the, what we have in front of you as a second reading is the, is the deal and is the project that we move forward. I want to clarify a couple items. First of all, Core, while a for-profit builder, will be working with a nonprofit arm that will eventually be the property manager, and so that's a little bit of a misnomer. Additionally, you're right, this, you know, this, there wasn't really no affordable housing. You did have a community benefit that was put in the specific plan. We lived up to that. We exceeded that with the original proposal of eighty-unit standalone, which will, will reach the deepest level of affordability. Look, I'm not a veteran. We have lots of veterans here. I've been working with them. I, I don't necessarily agree with the argument that standalone or not. We have some provisions in the agreement where all the, all of our amenities at the market rate project will be shared. So, everything is, actually, they'll have exceeded, you know, kinds of amenity levels. The additional five percent moderate that we gave up and worked with you on last, last month, we've also got a veterans preferred for that as well. So, there is integration of the affordability in the market rate. That's something that's in your development agreement that you can look at, that we agreed to. So, you know, I think we've integrated. We've got twenty percent, a hundred units, a hundred units of four hundred. So, we have three hundred market rate and a hundred units of affordability. That's twenty-five percent. That's, that's the financial feasibility threshold. This, this deal is at, at the threshold, and we can't go any farther. The deal in front of you, as written, is what we agreed to. And I think that there was a majority of the council that agree with that, and we'd hope that that would maintain here, and we'd move on with the second reading.
My concern is that, when I talk to staff, is that the only way we can hold any developer to make sure that the affordable housing is built is the, the two-point-eight million dollars, right?
Two-point-eight-eight.
The donation, oh, two-point-eight-eight million dollars, the donation, and also the permit for the occupancy, right? And I'm not so sure that, once it's built, that Republic can't say, oh, you know, we already built this, you said, you gave this agreement, you know, you've got to give us the permit. Legally, you've got to give us the permit. So, there goes, there goes our, you know, two-point-eight-eight million dollars in lawsuits. So, I would be happier if, I mean, if you can come up with a five percent. I don't think that changes much. You came with the five percent last time. Make it ten percent. And I understand this is going to be preferred veteran housing. Is that right?
Well, I think, I think there needs to be some clarification. Mr. Van Avery, your additional five percent is not as the agreement stands. My colleagues here are searching, but I didn't see that that was also preferred. Did anyone else find that?
No.
Yeah.
My question might be to staff. I remember reading in one of the documents that the five percent in the market rate building was set aside, and it listed teachers, first responders, police and fire, or, but I know I read that somewhere, but it might have been not in the DA, but in one of the attachments.
All of it.
The, I believe you're recalling information that was submitted by the TOD-1 developer showing the, this. All it, all it says is that it's moderate income, and there was material submitted at your meeting on March twenty-seventh.
I spent the weekend detailing this, and I remember distinctly saying, ah, teachers, fire, and sheriff.
It's a secondary preference. It's a secondary preference. You're right.
The secondary preferences, that's right. Those are the secondary preferences after veterans.
And what page is that on, Mr. Conneran?
Except...
Of the DA?
I believe it's in Exhibit C, but I'm guessing.
But regardless, Republic stands by the deal that we made last reading. That was the motion that was made.
I think it's in...
Exhibit C?
Page seven, two-point-three-point-one. It goes through, to the extent allowed by law, secondary pref...
There it is.
And persons who supply public safety services. So, that's, it is in there.
Yep.
And fire and sheriff on the next page. Yeah.
And we also, in the discussion today, that five percent...
No, there's no veterans.
The rate units, the five percent would also be given to qualified United States veterans. I know there was some language proposed this afternoon that we said the five percent in the, in the market rate would. We, we agreed that it could be for, it would be given preference.
Go ahead, Mr. Holliver.
That...
Right here.
Is that for the eighty units?
It doesn't, I don't read it to...
Okay, well, I think she just said they added that language today.
Mm-hmm.
Because mine just said national.
Okay, my understanding.
That was not our understanding at our last meeting, that there would be a veterans preference for the units within the market rate building. You know, I...
Staff, staff added that. I mean, we thought that sounded good. I mean, just, just because it says veterans preferred, it's not going to mean that the other, you know, moderate, if you qualify at moderate rate, you qualify.
You know, I, I know we have several veterans in the audience tonight and have come to our meetings before. I think if we have all of the units be veterans preference, then I think there's a good chance that we are excluding all non-veterans from the site. So, I, I think keeping the veterans preference within the eighty units, that was, seemed to be the desire from the veterans who've come to our meeting tonight. But I think for the twenty units within the market rate, should be open to any applicant, veteran or non-veteran, and not have that distinction. That's, that was the understanding that I had.
That's fine. I, yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
So, it'll go back to the original language, then? That was, that you proposed at the last meeting?
Mm-hmm. Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I think we're about ready to take some formal votes here, but can we take a five-minute break? I just want to make sure we...
Can we?
Is that all right? Mr. Lee's already standing up.
Don't anybody leave.
Let's just make sure we got everything, yeah.
Yeah, I have a good idea.
Page seven of the document. I couldn't see that.
No, we, staff and I had this discussion that it could be that the 2015 maps were appealed by several communities.
Yes.
And once those appeals are dealt with, whether it'll be called the 2015 maps or the 2018 maps, I have no idea.
Right.
That's theme alone.
Okay, we will check to make sure the language is consistent and...
But your phrase that you had on one of the documents, it said, "As these documents were amended," I think gave us the flexibility to make sure that we're working.
Okay, so however that, those documents are formally adopted as a result of this review process, that's what they're going to be subject to, we'll check the language.
Thank you.
You, there was a discussion about the Cal Green requirements and the fact that the recycling rate is 65 percent?
At least.
Yes.
The law is written as minimum, equal to or greater than.
Okay, so that would be changes in the site development plan.
Thank you.
And then you talked about the, to make sure that the publicly accessible spaces, particularly the BART Plaza, are as useful as possible, there was, the improvements to that area should include power supply, and I would suggest locked water spigots, so they can't get just turned on, but there's access to water. Those, those kinds of things are fairly critical. So we'll add in a condition that specifies that the, the BART Plaza, and I don't know if there's any other public space, would need to have electricity, electrical outlets and, and water supply.
Since we're talking about it, I talked to staff about the potential of bringing the recycled water pipes along the length of Rollins Road, ending at the canal, so that if in the future we ever do anything along that chain link fence on canal, there would be a water supply for landscaping there. Right now, it's just an ugly chain link fence full of garbage, but in the future, it could be something else. If we can bring the recycled pipe across, not just along Millbury Avenue, but across the property, the same pipe would make recycled water available for landscaping at 6A. So it's the same pipe.
Okay, so the, there's landscaping within the 6A building and within the parking lot, so the recycled water would have to be extended to that end.
With respect, Councilwoman Schneider, we've already agreed to a condition in the recycled water. I, I can't move off that one condition. It was an additional condition that we agreed to in the DA through Public Works, so I can't extend that issue.
Then let me ask, the current BART parking lot has landscaping on the north side, and that should in time be recycled water, but if the pipes aren't there, and you've got to cross a road, you've either got to dig up a road, or you've got to string the pipe across the road. So how would you move Bart, the BART parking lot to recycled water?
The BART parking lot, well, the recycled water would be brought primarily to the, you know, to the buildings and to the areas that we're trying to do the most recycling with.
I'm, I'm...
I think we're talking about 20 feet of pipe.
Probably think we can loop it from there. Go ahead.
Currently, there's existing recycled water pipe on portions of Millbury Avenue and Rollins. That, that was a pipeline that we think was buried with the BART project in, in place. We have conditioned the project, the two projects, TOD and TOD-1. TOD-2 will essentially go across the freeway and take an existing, connect to an existing system that was constructed by BART, goes across the freeway, and installs the pipe to the water quality control plant across Highway 101. Then TOD-2 also takes the recycled water pipe halfway across BART right-of-way, and the proposed route is, it's going to be hung from the existing bridge on Millbury Ave. TOD-1 will connect to that pipe at the half-point of the railroad right-of-way and take it to the, to their project. So essentially, these two projects will have the capabilities to use recycled water throughout the project with the option to extend the recycled water pipe to future projects that are adjacent to these two projects. So essentially, sometime, once the water, recycled water pipe is available at the plant, these two projects will be able to use that water, because there would be a connection point to the plant.
So you're saying that we, BART parking lot would be able to use recycled water in time?
The BART parking lot can use recycled water pipe, once that recycled water is available at the plant.
Okay, all right.
Continue.
So just to summarize the discussion, there would no, there would no additional requirement to extend to the property boundary of the north?
Correct, and I think the project shows that, that recycled water pipe would be extended through the project.
Okay, along Rollins Road, okay.
Correct.
Do we want to make that an express, an express condition within the, the tentative map?
It could be a condition on tentative map.
Okay, so I would suggest to make it clear that, that the water line, we, we make it clear that the recycled water within Rollins be sized to, so that it could be extended further within Rollins Road, because it has to be, it has to be constructed there. Okay. The next change is that consistently out through all the documents, that the hotel shall be referred to as a minimum of 164 to a maximum of 180 rooms, noting that the, there would have to be additional parking found, or it'd have to be satisfactorily addressed in the parking management plan, because it's, it's already deficient in terms of parking, just, just meeting the minimum standard, and we probably can address it through the, the parking management plan, but we haven't seen a plan that does that yet. So the, both the conditional use permit and the site development plan will have language that talks about looking at the parking for increases in the number of rooms above what's, what's currently been looked at. Within the development agreement, want to make sure that any discussions or to Aviador make it very clear that the, the city is not giving up any rights, and that is addressed by specific conditions already in the site development plan approval and in the tentative map, but we will add it into the DA.
I believe council had some clarifying language on that first part that he's going to add in, so it's, it's along the same. I'll let council...
Oh, legal, yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
And with respect to the existing city monument sign that needs to be relocated to accommodate the project, adding into the site development plan approval, a new condition, a new and separate condition that requires that the specific design and location of that city monument sign has to receive approval by the city council.
Yes, is there, do we need to specify anything about, the current one has landscaping and lighting and all that stuff, is that going to be a problem later?
Get to approve it.
We'll get to, fine, move along.
Okay.
Thank you, no problem.
Okay. The, the, there was discussion from, about providing a minimum street index maintenance standard for the streets within the, the project. It would include both the private streets, and I would suggest it also needs to include Rollins, although Rollins Road is being, will be maintained, will continue to be a public road, the conditions of approval require that to be maintained by the developer. I'm looking to Cyrus, do you have a, a particular number that we would put in from the, from the street index that would be, or does anybody have, have a particular level?
I do not have a particular PCI right now, but I know MTC has standards, and I'd really like to discuss that issue with the Public Works Director, as far as what level they want to put it at.
Okay, so that would be in the vesting tentative map, and also, I think, the site development plan. The shuttle study, the languaging would be modified to indicate, to add in that the size of the shuttles would be included, and also that the, the selected consultant is subject to city review and approval. With respect to the issue of the median barrier, the suggestion we have is that the language be added into the development agreement that says that should the city undertake a capital improvement project to construct that median between Millbury and Victoria on El Camino Real, that during, during the time period of the development agreement, that the developer will, will reimburse the city $75,000 of that cost. Seventy-five thousand.
Not to exceed?
No, just a flat seventy-five thousand. Not to exceed, it's that they've just agreed to it. The issue with the nexus is if we're going to talk about fair share or proportionate, we need to, to actually do a study and figure out who is the beneficiaries, and if we can just, if, if the council's comfortable with that as a, as a reasonable contribution, that's much cleaner to just say that it's seventy-five thousand.
We're comfortable with that, noting you'll bring it up with the other developers as well.
And then I think there was some discussion just before we broke about whether or not the housing within the 5 percent, the 20 units within the market rate building would have any specific preference, whether it would be the same as the standalone building, there would be no preference?
I believe the council...
We're okay.
No preference at all?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
No preference for teachers or city staff?
No, I don't think so. I mean, my, my opinion is no preference. I, I, it's true, those folks do need housing, but there's a lot of other, you know, low-income or moderate income people.
I prefer to be veterans. I'd make sure they have some sort of BMR.
Okay, we got to toss up here, people, I'm hearing all kinds of things.
Well, because we don't know of the other things.
All right, let's just say, I'm sorry, I'm asking the question, okay.
The additional 5 percent.
The additional 5 percent, okay. The consideration is which council members prefer to have a preference? Okay, let's start, Ms. Schneider?
I understand Councilman Holliver's concern. I'm okay with a preference for city employees, first responders. The teachers, I know someday Mills may have teachers' housing there, so I could see dropping teachers, although I'm open to teachers. I guess I'm a little ambivalent on that one. I'd probably go with the flow.
So would that be a preference or no preference?
I, I probably would give preference to staff.
To what?
Our staff. If we're going to have a...
Mr. Holliver?
My opinion would be no preference for those units. I think that would be something we could bring up with the high school district, should they go forward with the Mills project. I think that's more of an appropriate location.
Mr. Lee?
I prefer it be veterans at this time, because I'm not, I'm not confident that we can secure the, the other building.
Ms. Aliva?
No preference.
No preference, okay.
Those were all of the changes that I identified.
Let's just see here, okay. Are we good? The one language that miss, you might have said it earlier, that misidentifies the city's contribution, that's clearly going to be to the...
The 5 percent clarification?
Yeah, that was the discussion about having three separate ways of referring to it, that we'd have the developer-proposed standalone housing, and that, the 5 percent in that project would be identified as the 2.88 million that, that city is contributing towards, that 5 percent, to make it very clear that it's part of that project only.
Tom, did you want to say something?
That was my understanding as well, so yes. And then the other one, I apologize if I did not hear this, but we were clarifying the 164 rooms, I believe, as well.
She said that.
Okay.
She did say that.
Regarding...
I think that's...
Regarding the, the hotel rooms, why do we have a maximum?
They can come back to us, don't worry.
Why do we even have a maximum?
We can be hopeful. Well, right now, they're worried about the parking, so if it gets any bigger than that, it's going to be a problem.
And how it's consistent with EIR or not.
Okay.
So can I make a motion for approval?
No, we're going to go through these one at a time. You've got five items here.
Right.
Right, so, subject one, adopt a resolution concerning the gateway at Millbury Station project.
Madam Mayor, you got a chance to talk many hours, can I have my, my time, please?
Oh yeah, sure. Do you want to wait for one item's talk, or do you want to do them all?
No, I'll just, I'll do all of it. I'm not planning to stretch this out.
Yes, right ahead.
I just want to voice my concerns, and I think tonight I voiced most of my concerns, that I really want to ensure that the veteran housing is going to be built, and I'm very concerned about that. That's why I tried to get another 5 percent, make a 10 percent to guarantee some veteran housing. We're rushing this, in my opinion, we rushed the specific plan, and we didn't guarantee BMRs for rental units, and I'm afraid we're doing the same thing now. We're rushing this thing through. It's been in the works for a year and a half, it's been discussion six hours, and, you know, we, we really haven't discussed even, there was a retail portion that wasn't even discussed. Staff says, staff has, excuse me, can I speak, thank you. The staff has, has pointed out that those numbers aren't consistent with valuation, we haven't spoken about that. Also, the, let me point out that the canary in the coal mine, if we don't, we need to plan, I'm not saying this, this project shouldn't go through, I think this project is, is, can be there, but I think we need to properly plan, because if we don't plan, what's going to happen is what's going to happen to Redwood City now. They built thousands of units, and now they're laying off fire and policemen. So how does that help our, our citizens? That's the canary in the coal mine, it's happening, it's, it was in the newspaper, in the Daily Journal. In Pleasanton, their overcrow, their schools are overcrowded, and it's degrading the quality of the schools. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't build it, I'm saying that we should plan properly to make sure all the components that support all our new residents is provided there, because what happens is, five years later, they're going to say, they're going to have to move out, because we have to raise the taxes to pay for all those services, and they're going to, they're going to lose out, and I don't want to see that. So I, I would ask, I know it's not going to happen, but I don't know why, that we have to rush this through, but like I said, my concern is that we're going to have hundreds of new kids who, who deserve not to be overcrowded and 40, 40 kids in a classroom.
Yes, Mr. Holliver?
Through the chair. Can our legal counsel perhaps give an overview of what guarantees there are regarding the building of the affordable housing, both the market rate, both within the market rate and the standalone building?
The easier one is the market rate building, because they're simply promising to give that 5 percent. They will be required to enter into a regulatory agreement that enforces that obligation. So I think that's pretty straightforward, they're going to have a contractual obligation to provide those. The real concern in, and it was a major issue when negotiating the development agreement, was ensuring that especially the early configuration had the construction of the affordable housing component building coming later in the process, they, they since moved that up, which is very helpful. But the concern was that the, the benefit to the developer of getting the increased bonus, that's bonus density given as part of the specific plan, is that they might build the commercial office building and the market rate housing building, and then fail to build the affordable housing building, especially because that's being funded, you know, separately by a, by a, for, and being constructed by a for-profit developer. The way that the agreement is structured, and it's pretty well laid out in Exhibit B to the development agreement, there's really two mechanisms. One is a flat statement that the certificate of occupancy for the market rate building will not be provided until the affordable project is, is complete. That's in, I think it's page... That's in B3. But there was a concern that that might not be a satisfactory, there's, there's a little uncertainty with the law regarding certificates of occupancy. So the, the alternative was the, was really a financial promise, and that is, the developer is going to contribute $2.88 million to the city to assist with the construction of the community center, or if that's not constructed, for similar uses. The city will have that money at the beginning of the project. The city is likewise agreeing to contribute $2.8 million back, but only once the affordable housing is constructed. So if the affordable housing is never built, then the city would not be contributing that $2.88 million, and would be holding and having the benefit of the $2.88 million contribution towards the community center. So that, I think, is a substantial financial stick to ensure that the developer completes the, the project. Plus, I'd also say that, that, you know, this is, I mean, BART's here, the affordable housing component is of significant interest to BART. BART is the developer's landlord, so in addition to the remedies the city would have under the development agreement, I, I believe you're also going to, we've, you know, they have not completed their ground lease, but it's been very clear in BART's board's adopted policy that affordable housing at this or higher levels be provided.
And if, for whatever reason, that parcel is not built, they can't decide to build something else there, like only market rate, or only office, or whatever. It's, it's, yeah, it's de-restricted, and it's also restricted within our zoning, our planning code, that we would have to approve whatever they would decide to build there.
And it's in our development agreement.
And it's in the development agreement, correct.
I forgot, I have one more question for the developer. Is there, is there any thoughts of increasing the commercial space at all? Have we, we moved since the last proposal? Is, is the bike parking still under ground floor frontage?
You know, council member, we, we've maxed out the, the development envelope for the entire project, including the commercial, so the proposal is as it stands.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Pappin, just one other point, I think you were, you would add a question earlier about the term of the development agreement, and just to be clear, it's a 10-year term, but there is a provision that allows it to be extended for five years. This is a complicated project with a number of different components, so that was a negotiated term with staff during the negotiation of, of the development agreement, that ability. They're required to complete the affordable housing and the hotel components within that 10-year period in order to qualify for, for an extension. I'm not sure what else they'd get extended, but just to be clear, that was a question you had.
Yes, that was a question. 10, 15 years seems like an extensive period of time. Okay, then we'll get through these pretty quickly. My concerns have been expressed all along. I do think that the better way to go is to incorporate the affordable with the regular. Concerns regarding the shuttles, the 500 missing or removed parking spaces at the intermodal center is a huge impact, and we have mentioned to BART, and will continue to mention to BART, that the commuters that come in and out of that station should not be unfairly charged for your decision to develop that. So we understand if there are system-wide increases in parking, but should commuters who go to the Millbury Station be charged an additional amount because you've chosen to proceed in this manner, it's not acceptable. Traffic is already, if anybody's read the impact reports, going from F to D, all the way worse than ever before, so the mitigation plan hopefully will assist, but it is of deep concern to me among the other aspects here. Okay, so let's, anybody else want to say anything in general? Yes, Ms. Schneider?
Question, I have just a couple of comments on some of the documents that we're going to be adopting. Do you want the comments at the time that we discuss the specific document?
Probably, let's go with number one.
All right.
This is the making findings concerning significant impacts of the project, adopting a statement of overriding considerations, and adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program based on a final environmental impact report certified by the city council on January 12, 2016, all in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Okay, Ms. Schneider, did you have a comment?
Just to the developer, a couple of the questions that I brought up to staff had to deal with noise protection in both the commercial building and the residential, that I believe they should be built to the same standards, because if you want Class A housing or Class A office, you want to have a work environment that is as little, as less noisy as possible. So I know that's a design review access. The other one, when I was reading through this, and this is a long time away, this is years away, the Class 1 bicycle trail, it's going to be part of the Bay Trail, is going to cross over Site 7 for the public. Site 7 is another piece of property that is owned by SFO, the airport, and I just realized as, and they use it mainly for storing materials, and we're going to have this lovely, great, new bicycle trail that could have gravel on it. So when the time comes, let's keep talking about how we can remediate that problem. I plan on skating out there, and gravel and skates don't go together. So we just have to come up with a way to make sure the airport works with us on that.
That laid-down yard could be used for so many more useful things for the city of Millbury than the San Francisco Airport.
Well, just like the, the mayor has said, can we start talking about the rest of Site 1? Can we also consider Site 7?
Is this, wait a minute, okay, can, let's, this was for the...
They're part of the environmental...
Attentement 1.
Yes, it's part of the comments inside the, the significant impacts. Those are my comments on significant impacts.
Your votes, please, Ms. Schneider, did you have something?
Well, we have to have a recommendation, make a motion to pass the second reading and take the recommendations from our staff.
Well, we're taking each item here, so item one, are you, yes?
Yes.
Okay, you're, all right, you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Ms. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pappin? No. Item two, adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement for the gateway at Millbury Station project to increase, to grant increases in development intensities and other benefits to the project in exchange for community benefits, including the provision of affordable housing and specific timeframe for construction of a hotel. Given the changes we've already made, do we have a motion? So moved. Ms. Aliva? Mr. Lee? Ms. Schneider, your vote, please.
Aye.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Ms. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pappin? No. Adopt a resolution approving a site development plan for the gateway at Millbury Station project, allow the construction of four new structures. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Aliva? Mr. Lee? Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Ms. Aliva? Yes. Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mayor, no. Adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for commercial lodging.
Wait, 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 wait. Are you getting the... We just want to make sure we're getting the movers and the seconds.
Most of them, except the first one.
Actually, you know what, she has to read the results.
If she could announce, if we could pause and announce them, just, we just want to make sure we're getting it right.
That's the law.
So on the, the sequel, we have Councilmember Oliver and moving in, Councilmember Hol... I'm...
Holler.
Holler, seconding, and it was a 3-2 vote with Councilmember Lee and Mayor Pappin opposed. The second one I got, that, this is the DA, Councilmember, you've got that one, was it Oliver, Aliva and...
Lee. So number two is motion by Aliva, second by Lee, approved with a vote of 4 to 1, with Mayor Pappin dissenting. Number three? Then item number three, motion by Aliva, second by Lee, approved with a vote of 4 to 1, with Mayor Pappin dissenting.
Thank you.
You ready for number four? Okay. Adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for commercial lodging in Building 6B of the gateway project at Millbury Station. So moved.
Second.
You got that? Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Holliver?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Aliva?
Aye.
Mayor Pappin? Yes. Adopt a resolution... Mayor Pappin, yes. Adopt a resolution, number five, oh, sorry, repeat.
Item number four, motion by council member Oliva, second by council member Lee, approved with a vote of five. Unanimous.
Okay. Last item, adopt a resolution approving a vesting tentative map for the Gateway at Millbrae Station project to allow the merger and subdivision of existing parcels totaling approximately 16.9 acres into six parcels, including four development parcels, a parcel for the existing Millbrae Intermodal Station and parking garage, and a parcel for the surface parking lot in the northeast corner of the site. So moved.
Second.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Aye.
Mr. Hollibur?
Aye.
Ms. Oliva?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pappin, no. Okay, done.
Will you do a site?
All of them, Lee? Yeah.
4-1.
Yeah, but there's more than that.
Are we going to stay?
Something wrong?
Because I had more documents.
What?
We did all your votes?
I gotta go get, I'm gonna take a check.
Okay. Item 13, report from the mayor, recall of nominations for vice mayor. Two council members asked, so we bring this up again?
Put it together and send it for your review.
We do have two comment slips. Do we need a discussion from the council? No. Okay, then I guess we take the comment slips. Todd?
Ray.
Todd, you're up.
Nothing left, right?
Really cute, it was delicious.
Had a little lock.
Wait, you got one in there?
Why you didn't take it?
Oh, God.
Good evening, members of, hello, there we go. Good evening, members of council. Todd Rep, Magnolia Avenue. Tonight, I'm standing here again, as I stood here many times before, asking you to consider your actions and the impact that it has on the community. Once again, I'm confronted with a woeful inability to do what is repeatedly asked of you, to do the right thing. This is indicative of a common theme, the contempt for Millbrae voters. Democracy is a trust between the voter and the government, an expectation that their vote will seat the person they elected with their ballots in a position of power. I think there's a little irony with the presentation of the California Voters Choice Act.
Sorry. Can we close the door?
Okay.
Sorry, Todd, go ahead. Excuse me.
To disregard the will of the voter and weaponize what is basically a ceremonial rotation shows us that you're putting your own personal interests and agendas before the very community that you were elected to serve. The obvious collusion and willingness to toss out the cast ballots last November hurt the entire community. That's right, it's been five months. Five months we've been held hostage without a vice mayor. We've heard a number of damaging accusations against Councilwoman Schneider that come free of any evidence, commonly known as slander. We've been subjected to ad nauseam rereadings and legal justifications for disregarding protocol. We've watched you turn a blind eye to the fact that the people, not protocol, elected you to the very seats that you're in. Are you willing to stand here and tell the same people that may have voted for you that you know better than all of them, that their choice was wrong, and to trust your judgment? Considering your repeated efforts to censor Mr. Sandrini, I don't think so. With a weary eye, I do expect that there will be a repeat of council actions in 2014, as is the attempt at the end of last year, and that we might see Councilman Lee seated in a seat that belongs to the woman that received more votes than him, Councilwoman Schneider. We have a right and responsibility to expect better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Janet Creach?
Wait till I have your question?
It's not off yet.
Is it not on?
Now it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Members of the city council, Janet?
I know, because nothing
Try?
Can you speak right into it?
Just talk into the mic, he said.
My nose is touching it.
I know. Still off?
There.
Okay.
I know.
Do we have another mic?
Where's the other?
Can you reset my timer, please? Can you restart the timer?
Yeah.
Okay. Now?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. I know there's nothing I can say tonight that will make any difference to the outcome. You have already made up your minds about who will be vice mayor this year and mayor next year. Three of you did the very same thing to Marge Colapietro in 2013. Gina Pappin, Wayne Lee, and Ann Oliva are all demonstrating an established pattern of self-serving, intolerant behavior. All I can do now is protest the manipulation, the lack of transparency, the mean spiritedness, and the disrespect you are showing the voters of Millbrae. Thank you. I was just waiting for your attention. I ask you one last time, please follow the established city council protocol and seat Ann Schneider as vice mayor. There should be no abstentions tonight. It's time for each of you to do the right thing. Our community is watching. Show us that we were right in electing you. Show us that you are worthy of our trust by seating Ann Schneider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Chee, would you done?
I was gonna use my time.
I'm sorry, go right ahead. I thought you said you were done. My apologies.
I did not say that.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm looking each of you in the eye and asking you to please do this. Except for Ann Oliva, who's looking down at something in her purse.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for something.
This comes from being a classroom teacher. If you're not looking at me, I know you're not paying attention. Thank you.
I was going to stay out of this whole thing for obvious reasons. A week and a half ago, I went down to visit someone in their office for a specific purpose, and when I went into their office, I was greeted with, "Well, Marge, welcome." And it was a Thursday. And the person said to me, there were three people there, and they said, "We're just enjoying our Thursday morning Millbrae comics." And I said, "What?" And they explained to me that they pay attention to what's going on in Millbrae, they watch the meetings on the internet, and then they wait for the Daily Journal to come and give a report, and then they refer to it at their Thursday morning comics. I did not enjoy hearing that, and I think I've expressed to you before, that I constantly, constantly hear about the dysfunctionality that exists on the current city council. And I want to ask you to maybe take a breath and do something that may or may not work, but ask you to at least try. I'd like you to consider not making any, not taking any action tonight, but to somehow get together, whatever way is legal, and sit down and make a list of what bothers each of you about the other. And come, it's not funny, Mr. Lee, you don't have to laugh and poke Ms. Oliva and laugh. I'm trying to do something here that makes the city council seem reasonable, and also for Ms. Schneider to seem reasonable. And if perhaps you do that in a good way, in an orderly way, and see if you can come to some kind of an agreement, if Ms. Schneider, if you would agree to this, the council will agree to this. Back and forth, give and take. And then when you've exhausted all of the possibilities, then come and take an action at the next council meeting. And remember, those without sin should cast the first stone. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Colapietro.
Okay. For the record, Ms. Creach, I was not voting on Ms. Colapietro. I was not in office at that time.
And I voted for her.
Okay. The item is calling for nominations for vice mayor. Any nominations?
I agree, we need a vice mayor-elect to nominate Mr. Hollibur as vice mayor.
Okay, Mr. Hollibur. Any other nominations?
I was actually planning on nominating Councilman Lee as vice mayor.
Okay, we have two nominations. Any seconds?
Seconds? I'll second both.
You can't.
You can second both. But you can second both.
Why not?
How does that work?
I don't know, you're the mayor.
You can take a vote, though. Take one vote at a time. First motion goes.
First motion goes. We have a nomination, Mr. Hollibur, and a second. Okay. You all right with that, or should, I don't know how you want to?
Yeah, we vote for the first motion.
Okay, first motion's up.
We got a second?
All right. Ms. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Hollibur?
No.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Oliva?
Yes.
Mayor Pappin, yes. Done. Can we have somebody swear in the vice mayor, please?
Do I have to accept the nomination?
No, you should have done that before the vote.
And as just mayor last year, I would like to have a bit of a break.
Okay, well, he's declining the nomination, then. We have a nomination of council member Lee. Do we have a second?
I would just like to make a comment about
Sure.
Regarding protocols. You know, protocols have, I think none of us take the idea of breaching protocol lightly. It's something that's very important for how the city government functions, how their city staff functions. But at the same time, it's important to remember that protocols cover a wide range of council member actions and council member roles and responsibilities, not just the rotation of the mayor and vice mayor. And I think a reason why we're still at this point today, why we have not been able to, you know, select an individual who is next in line to become vice mayor, was because that individual had violated protocols in the past, such as the, the city manager, council manager form of government, observing that form of government and bringing requests to the city manager and not directly to staff members. It's very important for how the council functions. So in the decision tonight to not go with the protocols, I think it's important we realize the protocols cover a range of actions, and they're the rules that the council sets to govern itself. It's not part of the municipal code.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Since November, I haven't said a thing, but there had been a council meeting in October where a consultant to the city talked about how 54% of the questions brought up to staff were by one council personnel. Of course, it wasn't named, but it was pretty much directed at me. But I can tell you that every communication I have with the city manager is done by email, and I will be doing a report on those requests because I strongly disagree with what the city manager may or may not have said. I don't really know what she said, because she certainly never told me. But I will be doing a report on the crimes that I'm being accused of and being committed as being guilty because I disagree with them. I will say that the city manager also, at all of my meetings with her, many of which were canceled, she would tell me everything the other council members did wrong. And that's simply the style, it's a term used in government, is I only have to keep three council members happy. Clearly, I was not one of those that she wanted to keep happy. So I am, again, disappointed. I look forward to continuing to work with the council members on things, but I strongly disagree, and I will be going through every item that the other council members up here stated in November, and addressing them individually and directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Other comments? Okay. I will emphasize that the standard, there's been a lot of questions about the protocols. This has been standard procedure, that the public elects the council members, and the council members then elect both the mayor and the vice mayor, and that has always been the way that it's been done. So we have a nomination of council member Lee for the position of vice mayor. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I'm sorry, Ms. Oliva. Ms. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Hollibur?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye, abstaining.
Ms. Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Pappin, aye. Can we please swear in? Are you accepting? Do I need to ask that?
I would implore Because, Mr. Hollibur, you're the least controversial person here. And it's only a vice mayor position.
He's Not any controversial.
He's declined at this point in time. We can't go back and forth with this. Will you accept the position, please?
I'll accept the position.
Thank you. Can you please swear in the vice mayor?
I, Wayne Lee, for the new solemn swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
But I will bear true faith and allegiance
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution to the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I well and faithfully
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mr. Lee. Moving on to council comments. Ms. Oliva?
No comments tonight. It's late.
Mr. Hollibur?
I'll pass tonight.
Ms. Schneider?
Okay. I accidentally was able to attend the SFO Noise Airport Roundtable. I am the alternate, although Ms. Oliva did not ask me to cover that meeting. But the good news is they will be forming a subcommittee to work on the noise that most affects Millbrae. I also attended the Grand Boulevard Initiative. It was time for my orientation. I am also an alternate. Pretty much Mayor Pappin made me the alternate to most things and not the primary to anything. So it was, it was nice to attend and get my training for Grand Boulevard. There was a former High Speed Rail Board Member who attended, and I talked to him about the possibility of getting a passenger and bicycle trail over the trail tracks, railroad tracks, and he said that that is something we should reasonably be able to ask of high-speed rail. Again, I am the alternate for that. Wayne Lee was the regular. He didn't good news is they will be forming a subcommittee to work on the noise that most affects Millbrae. I also attended the Grand Boulevard Initiative, it was time for my orientation, I am also an alternate. Pretty much, Mayor Pappan made me the alternate to most things and not the primary to anything. So it was, it was nice to attend and get my training for Grand Boulevard. There was a former High Speed Rail board member who attended, and I talked to him about the possibility of getting a passenger and bicycle trail over the trail tracks, railroad tracks, and he said that that is something we should reasonably be able to ask of High Speed Rail. Again, I am the alternate for that. Wayne Lee was the regular, he didn't tell me he wasn't going to be there, so I was able to attend the full Grand Boulevard meeting. This is sort of a norm, that the people who are the primaries, when I'm their alternate, that they generally, not always, but generally don't tell me to show up. So, who knows if it looks like it's an egg on Millbrae's face or an egg on my face. I attended the water conference, sea level rise issue, this is where you hear the latest on FEMA maps. The main message from that, and both Wayne Lee and Gina Pappan were there, was that for sea level and water issues, we need to work collaboratively. So we need to work collaboratively with the cities that are near us and in our region. The culture arts committee, the mayor asked me to follow up on applying for a county culture arts grant. I wrote to the city manager over a month ago about that, it didn't go anywhere. Culture arts committee has talked about the grant at two different meetings, but apparently the city can't apply because our procedures say that the council must approve all grants before they are applied. So, the Millbrae Community Foundation will be applying for that grant in a way that the city should be applying for it, it will be for the upcoming citywide art fair, an event that we used to have every year up until 2011. And with that, I already reported on community enhancement, they go forward working on parking. Their tree study is hopeful that when the parks master plan comes in, they'll be able to talk about doing a tree survey that includes both the number and types of trees, as well as the health of trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollibur?
Sorry, do have a comment. There is a bill that's currently before the state legislature, I think it's going to be going to committee next week, called SB 827. That's not my opinion on that bill. The mayor and I have been in discussion of perhaps a resolution in opposition to the bill due to its adverse impacts on small communities like Millbrae that need strong negotiating ability with housing developers. 827 would pretty much override all of our stationary specific plan, our general plan housing element, to allow housing up to five stories, eight stories, I think they reduced it to five stories. But, you know, I think, as we showed tonight, we do not oppose building new housing, but it's important for a small city like Millbrae to have balanced projects and to be able to negotiate with developers on community benefits. So I believe there will be a resolution at some point coming, perhaps at the next meeting to the council for consideration on that bill.
I would ditto that, we need to get this resolution moving to join the council of cities, the League of Councils, and all the other cities, removing local control, it's exceptionally dangerous, and the sustainability impacts on each and every city can be negatively affected, so.
We will, we will get your resolution. Do note that there were some amendments made, I think it was yesterday, that made it slightly more acceptable, but still, I mean, the basic approach is to take away local control, so.
Developer giveaway.
Yeah, so.
Too little, too late.
Very much so. Okay, and for the record, we'll clarify, Ms. Schneider misrepresented, she was notified by both myself and Ms. Oliva as to the airport roundtable. So, we're gonna, Ms. Schneider?
I'd like to check my phone number.
Mr. Lee?
Come to me. I would thank, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Schneider for attending the Grand Boulevard, I didn't get the notification for the meeting, so thank you for attending. And then the 101st, we hosted the 101st airborne unit along with Berlin, City of Berlin Game. We took them to Mills High School, Mills High School put on a fantastic show for them. They sampled our local cuisine, and they were very happy, my mother ordered. And then, and then we took them to San Francisco, and they were, they were extremely ecstatic, and I just want to thank the city and staff for putting that together, you guys did a fantastic job. They raised over $100,000, that was the 50th anniversary of this occasion, and let me just summarize real quick, this whole thing was to, San Mateo started this program to host a unit, 101st Screaming Eagles Army Airborne, they're famously known for their battle in Baston, and in their battles in Vietnam. And when they came home after Vietnam, most veterans were spat upon, but San Mateo welcomed this unit, and since then, other cities joined, and Millbrae joined in 2013. And I think I'll just leave my comments to that, thank you.
I do want to thank Councilmember Lee for taking the lead on that. The military unit members had an extremely good time in your showing around, we also like to thank the Millbrae Historical Society for loaning us the vintage fire truck for the parade. It was an overall success, and I really want to thank you for all the hard work and effort you put into that. Any other comments? Ms. Oliva? Okay, I would like to emphasize again, the May 1st meeting on the recreation, pardon me?
Yes.
And we're going to close in honor of?
Vera Beal, a longtime Millbrae resident and former police dispatcher here in Millbrae passed away a couple weeks ago, so I'm going to close in her honor.
Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work and effort this evening, greatly appreciated. Have a good night.